Good evening. We'll call the order, the December 12th, 2012, the 12:12:12 meeting of the Edina Planning Commission. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Forrest here. Commissioner Scholder.
Here.
Commissioner Potts.
Here.
Commissioner Platt.
Here.
Commissioner Kelski.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Stott.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Grabel. Welcome. We have a full house tonight. I see we got the "s"s in that side and the "them"s on that side, or is this the "s"s over here and that's the "them"s? That's funny, folks laugh. First item of business, approval of the meeting agenda. You have the meeting agenda before you, and with the consent of the commission, I will add at 4A, right after the approval of the minutes and right before community comment, we will have a report from Commissioner Platteter on the work of his subcommittee to date concerning issues that are of interest to the city at this time. Are there any other comments or changes to the agenda? Hearing none will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. The next item is approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Planning Commission of November 28th. What is your pleasure with respect to the minutes of the 28th? Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the minutes.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes are approved. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Platteter to provide us a report and update on what his subcommittee's been doing.
Yes, so thank you Chair. Myself, Commissioner Potts and Commissioner Forrest have had a small group going for about the last month and a half. We're digging into some of the residential issues that are going on around the city. We've met with some smaller groups, some of you have been with that, we've met with the city and some other folks to try and understand the perceptions and the details of what's going on. Out of that, we've had a couple things, kind of two major themes have emerged, one with just general construction issues on sites and what happens with when they're building in a neighborhood, and then second of all, on zoning issues, which, you know, could be anything from the house size and a lot, setbacks, some other things. So what we're doing with that, the first piece on the construction, the city has come out with a construction management plan, so any new lots going forward, the builders will have to sign this construction management plan. It'll be posted at the site for citizens to look at and see what's happening, any complaints, they'll be able to call a number with that on anything in the construction side. Also along with that, the city is in the process of rolling out additional enforcement on construction sites, so they're looking at hiring a person or persons visiting these sites at least weekly to understand what's happening on the sites, the cleanup's going okay, any major issues on the site, so that's the part of it. On the second piece with the zoning issues and what that may bring up, right now, we're working on a plan to have some citizen input on that. One of the items, we'll come back to the Planning Commission in early January to have a plan to address to the Planning Commission, any comments with that, and we'll roll out something after that with public input. In the meantime, working on Speak Up Edina, we're going to start a blog on that in a week or two for people to give us their views, give information out, and for the city to potentially respond on what's happening with that. So, look forward to that. We'll have more information posted on the city website in the next couple of weeks, but that's an update for now. I don't know if Ken or Arlene, do you have anything else to comment on that? Okay, thank you.
Any comments or questions by the commission? Thank you very much. It's a good effort. The next item on the agenda is community comment. During community comment, we invite residents to share issues or concerns that haven't been considered within the past 30 days, or which aren't officially slated for future consideration. This evening, we will be hearing a proposal on a subdivision in the Morningside area. You may have comments about that. If you do, we will hear your comments at the time that presentation is made, so that would not be appropriate for community comment. However, there's been a lot of email traffic and communication with the commission and with others concerning some of the issues that Commissioner Platteter discussed, just discussed, and during community comment, if you wish to discuss or add comments or opinions concerning construction practices or zoning issues on redevelopment, that would be an appropriate time for you to do that, if you wish to do so. He did mention that we will be introducing a more formal process in January, but if you wish to make some comments tonight, we would be more than happy to hear what you have to say. So with that, I will open the meeting for community comment. Do any residents have any issues that they would like to bring to the attention of the Planning Commission? If so, please come forward to one of the podium, give us your name and address, and That was a long introduction, and nobody's taken me up on it. Maybe everybody is waiting for later. Okay, seeing no one coming forward on community comment, we will move forward into public hearings. The first item on the agenda is lot division. Matt and Mike Knott, 439-28-49th Street West, Edina, Minnesota.
Thank you Chair, members of the commission. Before you is a lot division at 39-28-49th Street West. This is just north of the 50th and France area, west of France Avenue, here's France here, existing property located right here. Currently on the site, there is a duplex that's under construction. This is the zoning in the area, they hatched properties, indicate properties that are zoned R2 where duplexes are allowed, the dark lots, those are single-family zoned properties, so it's kind of a mixture on this block. So again, there's the property on the north side of the street. What the applicant is proposing is essentially a zero lot line division that would separate the duplex into two separate units. Again, it's under construction now. This is a look at the building. So it's being constructed with a firewall that separates the two sides, and that has been inspected by the building department. So the item for consideration is this reasonable, staff believes that it is, again, there's that firewall that separates the two, there have been similar divisions, similar to what's being requested, most recently, this property here to the west, which also was a new duplex built about five years or so ago. There are separate utility hookups to each of the units, and again, the footprint of the building is not impacted by this. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the lot division.
Questions for staff? I have a question. Did this property not come before us not too long ago?
It did, it received a variance to build the structure. The variance wasn't for the building itself, it was for the lot size. The building that you see there meets all of our setback requirements. The variance was just to build any structure on the property, it was for the minimum lot size.
Okay. Other questions of the staff? Thank you. Would the proponent care to make a presentation?
No sir.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else wish to comment on this proposal? Seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the matter is now before the commission, what is your preference? Any discussion, comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
Chair, I'd just point out, this is, I think as I recall, pretty much a cookie cutter to what we approved previously in the last couple of weeks or so, and I don't think, unless I'm missing something, I don't think there's anything that's really substantively different. Based on that, I would recommend that we approve it.
Okay. Other comments? Would you care to put that in the form of a motion?
No, it's moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, the lot division is approved. The next item on the agenda is a variance for Nicole Sundberg, 5801 Crescent Terrace, Edina, Minnesota.
Thank you Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The request is for a 25.85 foot front yard setback variance at 5801 Crescent Terrace for Nicole Sundberg. Excuse me. The subject property is located south of Crescent and just east, west of Rolling Green, it's within the Rolling Green neighborhood. It consists of a rambler, you can see it with the aerial photograph here, the house orients towards Crescent, there's a home to the west at 33 Crescent Terrace that fronts Crescent, the house to the south actually fronts Rolling Green Parkway. This is a photograph, an assessing photograph of the existing home that's there right now. This is the house that's directly to the west along Crescent, and the house to the south along Rolling Green. This is a site plan illustrating the existing location of the house relative to the required setback for front yard, side and rear when the house is removed, and they're proposing to rebuild it with a Mediterranean-style two-story home with attached garage. The required front yard setback is an average of the homes on either side at 33 Crescent Terrace, which is 82.3 feet, and at 4904, Rolling Green at 73.2, which in turn then is an average front yard setback required of 77.75 feet. The existing front yard setback of the home is at 51.9 feet. The home was built in 1953, it predates our current ordinance. Our most recent ordinance requires an average of the homes on either side. Prior to that, there was a number of options that a property owner had, they could either average all of the front yard setbacks along the block between intersections, they could do a parallel line rule, or they could do the average between the two. So, there were, prior to our current code change, other options available for front yard setback, that's no longer the case. The homeowner is hoping to build a two-story Mediterranean-style home, this is a, it's a little busy, but it's the survey showing the existing home underneath in a dash line, and then the new home location. The new home will actually just maintain that existing non-conforming setback, it'll probably be just a couple of feet back further at about 54 feet. Here's another view, this is illustrating the landscaping that they're also proposing for the site. This would be a front view, what they've done is they've created a two-story home, but they've masked the two-story portion of it in the middle of the home with the garage portion, which is the one-story portion adjacent to the property to the west, and then also a one-story element that would be next to the property to the south. So the two-story portion of the house is actually centered and away from the homes on either side. The lot is large, it's triangular in shape, with much of the lot area part of the front yard. The proposed average front yard setback required would maintain the adequate spacing from the street and maintain continuity along the developed streetscape. In a new undeveloped subdivision, the minimum front yard setback is 30 feet. The ordinance requires in a developed subdivision, which most of Edina is, is that you do the average on either side, and that was meant really to maintain what has been developed along the block, so that there isn't this continual erosion of building in an established setback area. In a typical lot and block situation, you'll have a lot on a standard block, and most of the homes will be pretty much lined up, and so the average does work out so that the homes maintain that existing even streetscape. The character of the neighborhood includes large homes that are proportionate to the ample lot areas, which are oriented towards views, topography and street presence. The proposed home has been designed to conform with all of the other zoning ordinance requirements with the exception of the average front yard setback that's required, but what they are proposing is just maintaining the existing setback that's there right now. To reduce that setback to the required average front yard setback, will reduce the buildable area of the lot by approximately 7,000 square feet, so it does really impact quite significantly what can be put on the lot, and most of the lot is street frontage, there's a lot of front yard area. The primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site, staff does believe the proposed use is reasonable, it's a permitted use in the R1 single dwelling unit district, it complies with all the requirements with the exception of setback from Crescent Terrace. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the nearly one-acre lot. The most impacted neighbor to the west is approximately 66 feet away from the sidewall of the proposed home, which would be the garage, a lower portion of the house, it's not the two-story portion, and the home to the south is approximately 75 feet away, and again, will be adjacent to a one-story portion of the house. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of the triangular-shaped lot and allow for a new home to be built at the same distance from Crescent Terrace as the existing home. The new home simply matches an existing non-conforming 51.9-foot front yard setback that's been in place since 1953. The required average front yard setback reduces that buildable area again by about 7,000 square feet. Is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use with complying with the ordinance? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable, the new home will match that existing non-conforming setback. The practical difficulties in complying with the ordinances are created by the required front yard setback that is dictated by the adjacent properties, not by what had been existing there all along. The lots are large with generous spacing between structures. The purpose behind the ordinance is to maintain an established front yard sightline and streetscape. That's already established in Rolling Green, the ordinance is meant to prevent a continual erosion of that, and the new home will not do that, it will maintain the non-conforming setback that's there right now. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property and not self-created? The unique circumstances, again, are the existing lot is subjected to this average front yard setback with the deeper homes on either side, which impacts and reduces the buildable area dramatically, and pushes the home further back on the lot and impacts the ability to provide a reasonable rear yard. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? The proposed home will be consistent with the location of the existing home and will not change the streetscape along Crescent Terrace. The character of the neighborhood consists of estate lots with homes located on properties based on topography, views and shape, lot shape, unlike the traditional lot and block situation where homes are generally lined up with one another. The applicant is simply asking to preserve the non-conforming setback, all other portions of the project do maintain the ordinance requirements. Staff does recommend approval of the variance, subject to the following conditions, subject to the site must be developed and maintained in substantial conformance in terms of the house location, mass and overall height. Staff does understand that they're still in the design stage, this isn't perhaps their absolute final design, but I was told, and they indicated to me, the architect, that they had every intent of locating it in that location with that mass and that height. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. There better be no questions of staff, thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Forrest.
Just double-check the diagrams. Can you point out on picture where the setback line would be on their proposed plan, so where it would run through the new structure, approximately?
This one does, it's not really showing where that line is, but it's, here's the old garage corner right here, and it's probably down to here. The closest corner of the new house is over here, as opposed to the existing garage corner over here, so the closest point actually is further away from the homes on either side, and it's at this point, it'll be approximately 54 feet back, so it's a little hard to tell because we don't have an image showing that new house, but it's cutting through that back wall of that existing garage, which is about right here.
Other questions of staff? Thank you, Chris. Be happy to hear from the proponent if they'd care to make some remarks.
Good evening, I'm Nate Wissink, I'm with Streeter and Associates, and I'm on behalf of the applicant, well, we're the builder for the applicant, but on behalf of the applicant, Jeff Nicole Sundberg, so they're here tonight. I don't know if you're familiar with Streeter and Associates, we have a, Stephen Streeter's here this evening, he is the owner of our firm, we've been building custom homes, custom architectural homes in the cities for 28 years, and we've done many in Edina. And so, first of all, thank you guys for hearing our variance request, thank you Chris for putting the application together, and we are in full agreement with her analysis regarding the variance request. As, I'd like to just point out a few things, is there a place I can show some diagrams?
Right now.
So as you look at this diagram, this indicates the buildable area on this specific site, and it shows the old footprint of the existing rambler, and so how that impacts what could be developed on the site, given the current front yard setback requirements. And so as you look at that, what ends up saying, what it ends up telling you is that to build a new house on the site, it really dictates where to put that house. And our concern with that is twofold. Number one, we don't think it promotes the best location on the site. By placing our home towards the back of the site where it would be more required to do, you'd be more injurious to the property to the south, 4904. So placing a home towards the back of the property then would overshadow the property to the south. Secondly, we believe that the design and location, there's a reason why the house is where it is today, and we think that the current setback actually promotes the most reasonable spot to put the house. So as we looked at with our architect who's here tonight, Andrea Swan, and Travis Van Leir who's our landscape architect, we looked at how we would cite this house, and specifically given the current issues, we felt like by putting the house and opening up just the current setback of where the existing house is, it promotes a lot more opportunity to put the site, or put the house in a position on the site that would allow a yard in the back of the house. Without that, you can see even with the existing footprint, you would have no rear yard. And so we consider those practical difficulties. When we considered the three houses actually adjacent to the site that were all contiguous, they each had an average developable area of about 48 percent. This site has, with the current setback, has an average, or has a developable area of 30 percent. So you can see relative to the other sites, that this site is less developable, so presents a practical difficulty from our standpoint. And then just by the way we placed it on the site, as Chris mentioned, you know, the design is conceptual, our intent is to move forward with a home that's Mediterranean, which is consistent with the neighborhood. I'm just going to show a few pictures of some other homes in the neighborhood. So the scale of homes in the neighborhood is consistent with what we're proposing. We have a .91 acre site, you can see that the neighborhood is, has a diverse architecture, rolling topography. Here's a house, similar in style, actually overall massing is larger than the house that we proposed, but similar in style by the same architect. And then just some other representations of houses in the neighborhood. And obviously, there's a diverse amount of housing in the neighborhood, from ramblers to one and a half stories to two-story homes, but you can see that it ranges based on where you're at in the neighborhood. And so, we believe that based on what we've presented, we're doing what's best for the site in terms of the placement on the site, given the practical difficulties that we I would just like to note too, I've talked with many of the neighbors, and I'm sure some might be here tonight to speak, and I've got some letters from some of them that have not objected to the variance, and so I'd like to submit those. There are, I have three tonight that I can provide for you, so, two that are very, almost immediate to the site.
Any other comments, questions of the proponent? Thank you very much. Would anyone else care to comment on this proposal?
Good evening Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Marcus Molison, I am an attorney with the Lincolnson Venom Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of a number of the neighbors immediately adjacent to and surrounding the property. And specifically Brad and Susan Baker, Phil and Pam Broat, Kevin and Patty Gilligan, Bill and Donna Ramsey, and Bob and Candy Gravier. My clients, the neighbors collectively oppose this variance and request that the commission recommend denial of the variance. As an initial matter, and I'll put this drawing that you were just looking at back up here, just for reference, and I think a couple of things to point out as we look at this. The first one, and I'll talk about this in just a minute, is just the size of the buildable area. It can be a little misleading, but recognize- It can be a little misleading, but recognizing this is nearly a one-acre lot, the buildable area is 12,600 square feet approximately. So it is actually quite a large buildable area. I would suggest larger than most of the lots in Edina. And secondly, if you look at the augmented buildable area, that would be the case if the variance were granted, of 19,559 square feet, that actually represents a 55 percent increase. So this is not a small variance. This is actually, in terms of buildable area, a massive variance, and in terms of proximity to the street, is also a very significant variance moving in 25 feet. It's not a matter of a few feet here or there. 25 feet is a significant variance. Also, I think it's important for me to note that and emphasize that why we're not here, why I'm not here, and why my clients aren't here. We're not here to oppose redevelopment or to oppose change or anything like that. All of my clients clearly recognize that this property is going to be sold, this property is going to be redeveloped, and they welcome that. That is not...that is not the purpose here. We do however propose...we do oppose this particular variance, and we oppose it because we believe that none of the three criteria that are required for a variance to be passed legally are satisfied, and because granting the variance would adversely affect the neighbors' use and enjoyment of the property and the property value as well. As you all know, variance applicants carry a heavy burden. That's a long-established principle that to obtain a variance, you have a burden, and there are good reasons for that. Obviously, the standards that are contained in the zoning ordinance are there for a reason, including the setback requirements, and that's to protect neighboring properties and to maintain aesthetics and consistency. So specifically, applicants must demonstrate this legal standard is practical difficulty. And that's a term of art. That might not sound like a very high standard, but it actually is. Practical difficulty has three elements, and in the staff report, they've been mentioned, but I'll mention them again. First, the proposed use and the variance must be reasonable. Second, the plight or the hardship of the landowner or applicant must be due to the unique circumstances of the property. And third, the variance must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We believe that this proposed variance actually violates all three of these and is not satisfied. So first, let's talk about the reasonableness. As I was just...as we were just talking and we were looking at that, the size of the lot is a substantial buildable area as is, and to actually allow for a variance that more than increases that buildable area by half, we do not believe is reasonable. Second, the plight or the hardship, whether it's unique to the property, again, a very significant buildable area, and it's sufficient to construct not only this house but other comparable homes. And I would suggest that...I have no doubt that it would be nice to grant a variance for the applicant, and that it would be convenient to do that, but the standard for granting a variance is not inconvenience. If, as is the case here, you have a significant buildable area, I would suggest that there is not...there is not that plight, there is not that hardship. And I don't know that it is unique to the property. Given the size of the property, I think there are a lot of configurations that could work even for a house of this size. And then finally, would the variance alter the character of the neighborhood? The...this again is a significant departure from the setback requirement, 25 feet. And it is absolutely true, and I know this has come up twice, that the existing home, that this essentially mimics what the existing home is in terms of footprint. And that's true. But a couple of things that I think should be noted are that this is not exactly where the location is going to be of the house, and of course, the house is much larger. The actual edge of the house is going to come all the way to the setback line. Thank you. All the way to the setback line, so it's going to be five feet off the property line. So just looking at this picture can be a little misleading because it looks like...but this is the existing home. This is not the new home. The new home is going to come all the way up to the property line here, or at least the garage well. The other thing to mention is in terms of the idea that there's a house there that is non-conforming and grandfathered right now, if you will, is that the...and that's absolutely true, but the current home is a single-story home. The home that's going to be built is significantly larger. It's in terms of scale, in terms of height. It's going to be 40 feet high at its highest point. And so again, to suggest that it's going to be the same, it's really an apples and oranges comparison, I think. This is going to be a much larger home, it's going to be a much taller home, and it's going to affect not only the aesthetics and the streetscape, but it's also going to affect sightlines for the property owners. And I would suggest that that is really what...one of the things, one of the primary things that is the character of the Rolling Green neighborhood. These are estate-style homes with very large setbacks, and intentionally so. And to actually vary from that by 25 feet actually will impact both the aesthetics and the sightlines. So to summarize, variances should be granted where hardship and significant difficulty exist, and we don't believe that they exist in this case. This home or a comparable home could be built within the current setback standards, and the side yard on the far side of that picture could be better utilized. And so for these reasons, we respectfully request that the commission recommend denial of the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mollison. Others who wish to comment on this proposal?
I'm Suzanne Nellman, and I live at 4812 Rolling Green Parkway. We've lived there for about 30 years, so I have seen the neighborhood change. And this house is a beautiful house. But the thing that we're opposing is the fact that, as I've seen the neighborhood change and the Ramblers have gone out, originally, there was so much space, and the Ramblers were set different areas because you had so much space around you. As the bigger homes came in, this ordinance that you've developed has really preserved the beauty of Rolling Green. The houses that were shown to you are beautiful, but they have been pulled back so that you don't end up having these big houses right up close to the road where the old Ramblers were up closer. They didn't impact the road. The bigger the house, the farther you have to set it back, otherwise you really feel...you lose that beauty of the whole situation. So when we talk about grandfathering in this setback, it really isn't going to be for the benefit of the community. You have in the past, many times, as houses have...Ramblers have gone out, and even on curves like this, which is a real problem, you have held to the standard of using this calculation to pull back the larger houses, even though there's always been, and if you go back and look at some of your minutes, concern about backyards. But by doing that, by staying with this, by making the houses readjust their configuration, they still get what they want, they still have a beautiful house. But you have pulled it back so that the existing houses that are neighbors don't lose anything by this new mass in front of them, and yet everybody can have it. It's a big lot, it's a big building pad. And I don't know if this group does it, but I've seen in other neighborhoods, other communities, where to show the mass of a new building, they have what I think are called story poles. And those are actually, you know, poles the height of the building, and then they have strings showing elevations. And I've seen this done because it really demonstrates to the community and to the commissioners what the mass will feel like as it is set in place. And I don't know if it's something...they're not expensive. You could have the cost of putting them up, you know, borne by the people that would be building the house. But I would like to have you consider that for a possible way of seeing what mass does if you move it ahead of a variance. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nellman.
I'm Phil Broat. I live at 4820 Rolling Green Parkway. We're just north of this plot or development. And I guess I have a question for the...it's more of a question for the planning commission is, does the staff go out and actually look at the site and see what the sightlines will be for this proposal against the neighbors? Because it appears if you would just go stand in 33 Crescent Terrace Yard and look out, you'd see you'd be just blocked right to the street. So I guess I just wonder if the staff does go and look at these sites or not, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broat. Others wish to speak? We'll have a rebuttal in just a sec, okay?
I just want to clarify a couple of details.
I'm Donna Ramsey, 33 Crescent Terrace, and I'm on the lot line that would be right next door to this new, you know, house being built. And I've lived in the...we've lived in the neighborhood, what, 40, almost 44 years? And we've seen a lot of changes in the whole neighborhood. We have a wonderful community. It's a very...the people are very genuine, very good, and we really love this community. This is something that is now looking very large next door to our home. The height of it, it will be a backyard that will be right next to our, you know, area. And the sightline really does affect our house. And I would hope that you will really look at this very carefully, because I don't want to see our neighborhood all of a sudden changing with all of these variances and things coming in and changing the whole community. This is really something. This is...you have...you have, you know, the power to be, to do, and it's going to go on to the council. But this is Edina, this is our community, and I don't want it to really change for the worst part of building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Others who wish to speak? You had a clarification?
Let's have a couple of things that I wanted to share in terms of clarity. The house actually is 36 foot 3 inches tall, and the ordinance allows for a 40-foot tall structure. Actually, at the front door, from the front door to the height of the house, it's actually around...it's actually 32 feet 9 tall. To put this in perspective, the house to the south, the roof of the house to the south is actually approximately two feet lower than that. So in terms of the scale, it kind of puts that in perspective. Also, in terms of size relative to the neighbor to the west, Mrs. Ramsey, who came up and spoke, she has, what Chris said, a substantial buffer between her property and her garage. And then in addition to that, our one-story structure is shielded by landscaping, which is currently like similar to that today. There's a huge hedge around the property which provides privacy. We are working to promote continued privacy. But the way the lot is set up in general, there is no way to get a backyard that I can see, that we've looked at, in order to make this property usable. So the practical difficulty is there. In terms of the massing itself, the two-story portion of the massing is 8 percent of the site. So that kind of gives you an idea relative to the overall site size, it's 2 percent of the site. And the distance between the front door and the Gilligan's house, which is right across the street, their front door to our front door would be approximately almost 50 yards. So to kind of give you an idea of what the impact might be from other neighbors' perspectives. And we felt, given the way we looked at the site, actually counter to what they would say, by placing the house in the back, actually it would have a much more negative impact on the Bakers at 4904. And so we didn't feel like that's the right answer. And so we felt like the placement, given the practical difficulty, was the right spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wissing. I allowed Mr. Wissing to come back up because three of Mr. Mollison's clients came up and spoke in addition to him, so. Anyone else who hasn't spoken on this matter wish to offer any remarks?
One more.
Okay.
I'll be quick. I'm Andrea Swan.
Come to the...use the microphone and tell us who you are, okay?
Here?
Either there. If you're going to put something on, use the center there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm Andrea Swan. I'm the architect. And Arlene, you had asked about a drawing that showed the existing footprint or the proposed home in relation to the requested...
To the required...
To the...oh, to the required setback, okay. I was going to show...this one actually does show the existing footprint with the...
Proposed.
Current...yeah, with the proposed. So I...and this is the only drawing actually that more clearly demonstrates the existing footprint in relation to the proposed. And I did want to say that there was that...and considerate thought placed into where the house ought to sit in relation to all the neighbors.
Can you just slide the...can you slide that forward or back? It's not quite under the screen.
The other way.
There you go.
Okay. So we take it very seriously, and this is conceptual, so if this does move forward, especially the neighbors in direct proximity like Mrs. Ramsey that spoke, we would want to listen to you and learn about what your concerns are. And there is flexibility in terms of, you know, how could this shift or morph? But if you squint your eyes, actually, the house isn't that much larger than the current home, which is smaller than most of the newer homes that are being built in Rolling Green. I've certainly planned larger ones that are in the close proximity to the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Question?
Ms. Swan, can you just...can you help us outline on there? Are you saying that the configuration of the existing house is on that?
Correct.
Can you just orient us a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
In fact, it's closer to the street than our proposed.
In some places there, okay. So just if you could just trace it around there to give us an idea.
This is the garage of the current home. It's dashed. You can see it's oriented this way. The current home, we're orienting the proposed home to the southern property line. So the existing home goes like this.
Thank you.
Here is the existing...
Oh.
Nate highlighted it.
Yeah. So one other similar question. Could you trace the two-story volume of the home on that plan? What portion that is?
I need a pencil for somebody. So actually, the peak is only right here. That's the high point of the house. And this is the two-story right here. This is one story, this is one story, this is all one story.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Fisher?
So just to clarify, put all this information together. So you just showed the peak, put your pencil or pen right at the peak. That is 36 feet 3 inches as compared to the peak of the house to the south, which is 34 feet 3 inches roughly? Is that what we're hearing?
Our measurement's actually taken from...in reality, it's going to be less than that. We took it from existing grade, 50 feet back from where the proposed front of the home is going to be. We're actually gonna...we're proposing to level it out a little bit for a driveway. So in reality, the peak is going to be about a foot and a half less than what we just said to you. So it's comparable. It's going to be comparable to the neighboring home.
Thank you, Ms. Swan.
Thank you.
Anyone else who's not spoken wish to address this issue?
I'm Patty Gilligan. I live across the street at 5804 Crescent Terrace. So I will see the larger structure in front of me, and I think it will potentially shade So I will see the larger structure in front of me, and I think it will potentially shade our front yard if it comes forward. And all I've heard is that they want extra backyard space, but they've got a very large side yard, which is beautiful. And that's the part that I don't quite understand why we would want to grant a variance to move the house that much closer when they have a lot of land they could use for a side yard experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilligan. Anyone else? Thank you. Take a motion to close the public hearing? So move your second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, Chris, there was a question of staff, do, does the staff on variance requests visit the location?
Yes.
That was a yes. All right, discussion among the commission. Commissioner Fisher?
Chris, could you tell me, I'm just looking at the aerial photo of the homes in this immediate area. There's a home on Bywood West. Does that also meet the setback ordinance that we're talking about here? Or is it, is it really going to be different every three houses because of the houses that happen to be on each side?
It's going to be different for each lot. I mean, they're all, it's a whole mixed bag in Rolling Green. I mean, there are some, if you look at the house that's across thirty-three Crescent Terrace, it's at fifty-eight oh eight Crescent Terrace, it's actually addressing off of Crescent Terrace, but also has frontage along Bywood. That's thirty-one feet from the lot line adjacent to Crescent Terrace.
So to be clear, when we're talking about this neighborhood, which is, Rolling Green's obviously of unique character, and, you know, I agree that houses are set back, that's part of the character. But there's not, you know, a Rolling Green setback that says, it's about the, it, it's really still the same rule we have everywhere else. It's, it's going to be based on the average of the houses along that side, or the two right next to it, or whatever. And when we do have these issues, it typically is these corner-type lots or lots on a curb. And we've dealt with this in neighborhoods all over the city.
Yes. It's consist- that's a consistent requirement throughout the city regardless of the neighborhood or the lot size.
Commissioner Platter?
Say, Chris, do you have the, you don't know the heights of the homes, all the homes surrounding this, do you? These other, you know, the, specifically the adjacent lots and across the streets?
I don't, I do, I do not. No.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Stotson?
Another piece of data that comes to mind is, you know, one of the things I notice as I'm looking at this, I see that the setback that's required is seventy-seven point seven-five feet, and then on either side are seventy-three and eighty-two. So that's how you get to your seventy-seven foot average. But that creates a buildable area that, as Mr. Mollison said, is twelve thousand square feet, which is a lot of area, but it is only slightly less than thirty percent of the actual area of the property, right?
That's correct.
And under our code, you can build twenty-five percent, lot coverage can be twenty-five percent of the area. So basically, the way this is configured and the way the, the ordinance is working, they're only allowed slightly more than what they could actually do for total lot coverage on the property.
Correct.
So, so we do have these similar sidelines. Do we know anything about the lot coverage on the adjacent properties or in the area? Do you have any of that kind of data?
I do know that the majority of them aren't even close because the lots are so large.
Right.
There've been a few that have added pools and tennis courts and a lot of other things that are not included in lot coverage, but they certainly do take up space on the lot.
Sure.
And so there's a perception that there's, you know, maybe more coverage.
And in our code, lot coverage is strictly the house.
It, it would be the building area.
So not the driveways, not the sidewalks, not, not a swimming pool?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments? What is your preference? Commissioner Potts?
Yes, I'll, I'll break the silence. I think I have one other comment, and I'll see if I can follow that with a motion. I, when I look at this, given the, you know, appreciating the, the comments that have been made and given the, the nature of this lot, I tend to appreciate the, the, the design that's been done, particularly given the shape of the lot. And also referring to this aerial we've got of the broader surrounding houses, it, it seems to maintain the character of the neighborhood. And I think additionally, I agree with the, with the staff comments, and also would note that based on our side yard setback rules, and even though those aren't up for variance here, in sidewall height, the design takes some care with this site, and, you know, could certainly be pulled back into that buildable area, be built virtually as large, and, and I would say, create a greater imposition on the, the neighbors to the rear or the side yard. So I think there, again, given the, the size of this lot, the shape of this lot, and the nature of that street, I think it does a nice job of maintaining a, a good-sized front lot, the, the estate look that Mr. Mollison mentioned, while also creating a, a usable backyard with a, a reasonable amount of privacy for the things a family would like to do there. So I think, ha- having said that, based on, on staff comments, I'd move approval of the variance.
Okay, there's been a motion made to approve the variance subject to the staff comments and recommendations. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the variance. Is there further discussion on this issue? Commissioner Schroeder?
Mr. Chair, I wonder if I could ask Director Teague to just review for us the requirements for practical difficulties? Certainly. Let's see. In, in reading from the, the staff report, one of the criteria, relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use when complying with the ordinance requirements. And reasonable use does not mean that the applicant needs to show that the land can't be put to any reasonable use without a variance. Rather, they must show there are practical difficulties in complying with the code. Practical difficulties can include functional and aesthetics, aesthetic concerns. So with this, in looking at, you know, what's reasonable for this site, given, given the practical difficulties of the way the road curves and the, the required setback of seventy-seven feet from the other two homes. So what's reasonable, given the character of this neighborhood, which includes large, many large homes? So it was staff's belief that, given the size of this home, and given the impacts potentially to that property to the south, in meeting the setback could cause some, some hardship to that lot to the south. So it seemed reasonable to pull the, the, the structure up toward the street. As Chris mentioned, there is the home across the street and to the west that has about a thirty-five foot setback. So this is greater than that. So considering the size of the house in relation to the neighborhood, we felt that the practical difficulties that that criteria is met.
Other discussion? Commissioner Stotson?
Well, you know, if you, if we walk through the three standards, the first is whether there's, whether they're proposing a reasonable use. The second is whether there's circumstances that are unique to the property that are not self-created that are creating this. And third will is alter the essential character of the neighborhood. You know, the reasonable use, I, to me, I'm, I'm persuaded by the existing location of, of the existing house. A lot of the objections that I'm hearing are to what the height or the mass of the building is going to be once it's on there. And really, the variance is a setback variance. And so, you know, it certainly seems to me that if there's an existing house on the property in the location it is, and we're not encroaching further into the front yard, that that suggests that that use is reasonable because it's been there for some time. I would also suggest that, you know, the mere fact that there's such a small percentage of the lot that is buildable is a function of the fact that this isn't just a grid street. It doesn't go up and down the block. It actually turns the corner, creates a triangular lot here, which is really distorting that front yard average. If this was swung around and there were just a straight line, then I might be persuaded that they're going to be bumping up in front of the neighbor's sightline as you go down, as you go down the street. The purpose behind this average setback is to create a uniformity as you go up and down the street. Well, this street doesn't just go straight up and down the block, it curves around the corner. And so I think those are kind of the circumstances that are unique to this property. If you look at the, at the map in the, in the packet, the map that shows kind of the greater subdivision area, you know, there's a lot of different shaped lots, but this one does kind of stand out as being triangular, especially with respect to the lots near it. And then in terms of the essential character, I mean, this is the same, they're building kind of into the same encroachment that they had been building before. So while I understand the concerns about change and about a new house coming in the neighborhood and can appreciate that, it, it seems to me that, that this gives some breathing space that is, is appropriate for the neighborhood, fits that essential character, is going to be in the same basic location that the previous house was. So I'm, I'm in support of the motion.
Other discussion before we take a vote? Commissioner Forrest?
Well, when I first read the packet, I tended to agree with what's being said here. And then I went out and saw the site and was impressed with the fact that the house that's currently on the site is a large house. It may be one story, but it isn't a small little, you know, three-bedroom rambler. It's, it's, it's got some, some size to it. And I agree that the shape of the lot, to me, is a unique issue, but the amount of buildable space that's available there is still quite generous. Looking at the plans that we have before us, it looks like forty percent of the lot would be covered by either structure or hard, hard surfaces, probably impervious surfaces. That bothers me because it is such a large lot. So you're talking about a lot of square footage of, of non-pervious surface. So I'm, I'm, have to admit, I'm kind of on the fence with this. I don't think that the existing house being there means that the use is reasonable. I think those two things are, are aren't necessarily related. I think it's just, it's just that the current use isn't unreasonable in my mind. So my thinking has shifted somewhat on this. Also, the house across the street with the thirty-five foot setback is significantly narrower than the other lots, and it's more of a side-street setback that's the thirty-five feet, and the house is oriented perpendicular to that. So, you know, a small percentage of the lot is buildable. I do appreciate the fact that the one-story section with the garage, the larger portion of one story, is facing the neighbor there. But it's, it just seems like, I, I think that Ms. Ramsey said it very well, too, that another purpose of our ordinances is for the purpose of protecting some of the neighborhood character and protecting, giving people an idea of what they can expect to happen in their neighborhood. So a, a purpose of a variance is to do just that, to provide an exception. But I'm not totally convinced that somebody coming in and, and looking at what they have for buildable area, looking at, you know, the size of the lot, the configuration of the lot, you know, should be able to just come in and say, this is the house I want, let's put it on this lot. Whether or not it complies with the ordinances, it's, it's kind of like do your due diligence. It, this is what the lot looks like, and does the house fit? So that's the hard-line way of looking at it. I think there's some, I won't say totally convincing, I think there's some good points. The fact that it's a corner lot makes it unique, and it does significantly reduce buildable area. But I'm not, in my mind, I don't think it quite now makes the, reaches the standard for variance.
Commissioner Fisher?
Chair Gray, well, can I ask one question of staff, real quick?
You may do, absolutely.
I don't want to go back to previous thing. But I'm, I'm very curious, is there anything about the existing rambler? If you were to take the house off the foundation and build a two-story house on exactly this foundation, would we need any variances to make that happen?
You would for the second story, because that's new structure area, and it would be within the setback, perhaps.
So the setback rule would still apply, they couldn't?
Well, if there were already a second floor, we do have that two-hundred-square-foot or non-conforming setback provision, but this is, this is different.
All right. I'm just trying to wrap my brain around this, I mean, there's some compelling arguments on both sides of this. It's what makes it interesting, but also difficult. The, I mean, to me, I believe that, you know, when you look at the three standards, I, I really look, I, I see the unique circumstance as being a true hardship here. It's the, the shape of this lot is clearly different than the lots on either side and down the street. If you look at particularly, let's just say, the house to the south, which has less of a, of a setback than what's being required on this lot, they are enjoying more buildable area than this lot would enjoy. And, and I think it's a difficult argument to make. I mean, I understand the argument that, you know, they still have twelve thousand six hundred some feet of buildable area. And when you compare that to, you know, my neighborhood, you'd go, wow, what's the problem? But this isn't my neighborhood. This is a very unique neighborhood, and every lot here has a, you know, what I would call a really large buildable area. So the question we have to ask ourselves is, does this lot enjoy the same right as the lots next to it? And I would argue that because of the
And I would argue that because of the shape, because of the road wrapping around the way it does, it does not, which is the definition of a hardship, and it's not self-created hardship. I look at the footprint of the house that's there today, that's not a small house. It may be one-story, but it absolutely impacts the character as you're driving around this curve today, and I think what's being described, the design, the configuration of this house that would be placed here, would not change that character as you're driving around it tomorrow. And that's kind of what I look at in terms of those three standards, and I think, at the end of the day, yes, it is a change, but in the scope of what's happening in this neighborhood, I don't think it's a change that will alter the character to the negative.
With respect to the couple of comments that Commissioner Forrest, in the first place, we're talking about building an estate-style house in the neighborhood of estate-style houses. It seems to me to be unreasonable to require a large house to be built without a backyard of any type, and that's what would have to be done in this case. There would be no backyard were we to deny this variance. Secondly, if you look at, I mean, hardscape is not counted in square footage, and it's not, it's not something we ought to consider, and particularly when looking at the map, there's a lot of homes that have a lot of hardscape around them, pools and other things, and I wouldn't penalize this lot on that basis. I'm, you know, it seems to me to be a reasonable use for this property, and an enhancement to the property and to the neighborhood. Commissioner Staunton?
You know, the other thing I would mention, I was just kind of looking at the drawings, trying to figure out, you know, if this was a more squared-off corner, you know, almost if you extended the property lines into the street and it were, instead of a gentle curve, it was actually a corner, you know, as Ms. Swan was saying when she was up here, they've kind of tried to orient the house so that it would be square to that corner, and it's then you took, you know, if you extended the edge of the building to the, what is that, to the west, to the west, straight across, it's, you know, it's roughly in line with that, and then the same thing to the south. I think that's the, in my mind, that's what ultimately makes sense, is not to penalize them for the triangular nature of the lot, and if it were a more squared-off lot, would that, you know, would that make sense?
Other comments, other discussion on the motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of the motion, which is to grant the variance subject to the recommendations of the staff, and the staff comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you for your participation and your discussion on this matter. Okay, the next item on the agenda, variance for Doug and Pat Veda, 5201 Wooddale Avenue, Edina, Minnesota. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. The variance before you is a five-foot side street setback variance at 5201 Wooddale Avenue for Doug and Pat Veda. The subject property is a corner lot. It fronts Wooddale with the side street along 52nd. This is an aerial photograph. It's across from the Edina Country Club, from, across Wooddale Avenue, and then just south of West 52nd Street. Backs up to a property that fronts Kellogg, that's comprised of three lots. The subject property is actually two lots. The home was built very close to the northeast corner of the property. The garage loads off of West 52nd Street, you can see that, with the front of the home facing Wooddale Avenue. If you've driven down Wooddale Avenue, you probably recognize the house. It's tucked up in the corner, in the northeast corner of the lot. The property was recently for sale, with the buyers looking at the property. The city did get quite a few phone calls from interested parties with the potential to develop the property. It does consist of two 60-foot wide lots, with either two new homes, which would require a subdivision, or one very large home. The home is very original in its construction. There have been little, if any, improvements done to the home. You can see from the survey, the home was tucked very close to the northeast corner. The garage is very close to the rear lot line, and slightly too close to the north lot line as well. Plenty of street frontage along Wooddale, and also plenty of opportunity to the south. This is the existing main floor. Again, very original, there have been little, if any, improvements. There's been maintenance done on the home. The garage looks like a two-car garage, but it is not. It's low in height, and it also is not wide enough or deep enough to store two cars. These are existing elevations of the home. If you've been by, it currently looks like that. The property owners are hoping to add on to the garage, four feet to the north, which requires a variance. The existing garage is non-conforming in terms of setback along the north lot line to the, to West 52nd Street. It's also non-conforming along the east lot line. The minimum rear yard setback is 25 feet, and as you can see, a lot of the house already and the garage overlaps into that. Now, it does not require a variance from that rear setback, which it's about, about six inches off that lot line, because the addition that they're adding on is less than an equal amount of encroachment or 200 square feet, which is an allowable amount of continued encroachment at the same setback. Where they do need a variance is from the setback from the north lot line, which would require a 20-foot setback, and the garage is just, it's approximately 19 feet away. They'd like to add a little over four feet, so the setback of that new front garage wall would be approximately 15 feet away from that north lot line. They are also proposing to add on to the south of the home, which conforms to all the ordinance requirements. This is the lower level plan. They would be putting a basement underneath the new addition. We have the new elevations. This all is new to the south. This would be the front of the house as you're facing it from Wooddale, and then you can see the garage extending out an additional four feet. This is the north elevation of the house, and you can see the garage here. That's what's going to be coming forward, and it's also getting a bit wider to allow the storage of two cars. And then you see this piece right here that's dashed in, that's the four-foot extension, getting slightly closer to West 52nd Street. It does allow an increase in height to put a standard garage door. Currently, the garage is quite low, and it doesn't allow for the, for a, I mean, a current garage depth or height for a typical vehicle that you'd see today. Here are some photographs, and also a site plan illustrating existing conditions and what they're proposing. The little blacked-in area would be that slight four-foot extension. What it does show you is that the property to the east has their garage much closer to the street, even after the improvement of the four-foot extension. The proposed garage extension would still be about 26 feet nine inches from that side street, and the neighbor's garage is about 18 feet existing away. So there really won't be any change in views or streetscape. It'll still be behind the garage, and there are really only two properties. This property that faces Wooddale with their side street along 52nd, which is a subject property, and the house to the east, which fronts Kellogg with their side street along West 62nd Street. So the primary issue is the proposed development reasonable for the site. Staff does believe that the proposed additions, the proposed addition is reasonable. They are permitted in the single-dwelling unit district, and they comply with all requirements, with the exception of the encroachment into the side street setback area. The modest improvements will provide additional garage space and functionality without drastically changing conditions on the property. It will allow the garage to accommodate the storage of two cars, which is a requirement now, if you're building a new house. We would require a minimum two-car garage. The home would maintain the character of the neighborhood and remain the same, with the exception of an enhanced garage and conforming addition to the south side of the home. The property had been viewed as a tear-down with the possibility of one or perhaps two new homes in the lot. The owners had considered a driveway at one point off of Wooddale, accessing the lot for a new garage along the south part of the property. However, the owners wanted the home to look nearly the same as the existing, with all improvements blending in with the existing home, so that, that proposal was abandoned. Also would certainly have a change and impact along Wooddale Avenue and the property to the south. Is the proposed variance justified? Will it relieve practical difficulties that prevent reasonable use of the site? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The setback of the existing garage will be reduced by approximately four feet, with the sightlines along the street remaining virtually the same. The practical difficulties present on the property include the existing non-conforming street setback and rear yard setback. It's very difficult to try to add on to the house, given its current location. It's a large lot, but it's all been, the home has been tucked back in the corner. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly zoned property? The unique circumstances of the non-conforming status of the home and garage, given its location, which limits design opportunities. The home to the east has their garage much closer to West 52nd Street, so it won't be something that is closer to the street than something that's already occurring along West 52nd Street. The proposed addition will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The setback along West 52nd Street will be reduced, however, again, will not encroach as much as the neighbor. The variance will allow the home to be modernized without changing the look or character of the 1935 house. The home was considered by many as a tear-down when it had recently been listed, and the new owners wanted to preserve the home, although would like to make some minor modifications to the garage in order to accommodate two cars, which is required by ordinance, and allow for a standard garage door. Complying with the code forces conforming solution that would perhaps be more out of character if they were to try to introduce a garage to the south side of the property. Staff does recommend approval of the variance, subject to, the site should be developed and maintained substantial, in substantial conformance with the plans that were submitted with the survey date stamped January 4, 2011, and building plans and elevations date stamped November 28, 2012. With that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Questions of staff? Mr. Carpenter?
Chris, just to clarify, what are they doing with the garage right now?
They're not living in the house currently.
Oh, they're not, okay. So the prior owners, do we know what they were doing?
No, they have been there for many, many years. I, I don't know.
Just kind of curious.
Other questions of staff? Thank you. Does a proponent wish to make a few remarks?
Hi, I'm Jean Ray Camp Larson, and I'm the architect, and I'm here with Doug Veda, the client and homeowner, and we certainly agree with everything that Ms. Acker said, and I wanted to point out just one other hardship as related to this garage and the size of it, and the idea that, and again, to reinforce the idea that what we're doing is a sensitive addition that keeps that character. So really kind of a poster child for keeping a very charming, meaning small house, small spaces, but bringing it forward to work, really given the property value and the location. And so I'm just going to point out one more thing about the garage and how it's configured. Okay, so on the screen, you can see that the width and depth of the garage were a problem, were a challenge for two cars. These are showing two cars, this is, the diagram shows two cars here, and the current width of the garage is along that blue line I just drew. So in fact, in addition to the four feet that we're asking for the variance in depth, we're also giving up living space to allow for the width of the garage. So that used to be the kitchen, a portion of this, this section, was interior space, is currently interior space in the house, and so it's just really an extreme condition in order to figure out how to get this space on this lot for these two cars.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Staunton?
Could I just, can you give us the dimensions on that garage, both before and after?
Sure. Yep, prior to, it is 17 foot 10 by 60.
Maybe even if you have the, if you have the diagram, it would help.
Yep, I'll get it back up here.
Yeah.
So the outline of that existing garage is this dimension, and it does have this little storage piece at the back, but the dimension for the cars, of course, is this primary, oh, sorry, here we go, I have that, this is the existing, so I'll put an X through it like that. So it's under, just under 18 feet and just under 17 feet, so the, and then we're adding to the side. So we end up with a width of about 20 usable feet and a depth of about, oh, this is, I'm going to get the right scale. This diagram is shown at a different scale, and a depth of, yeah, 21, thank you, sorry.
20.
20 by 21, in the end, yeah.
Wow, still not big.
Yeah, no, it's not a large garage by any standard.
Even after. I have one like that, and your doors take a beating, but.
Yeah.
It adds to the charm.
The homeowner really is committed to the character of this existing house.
Other questions of the proponent?
Just for fun fact, we purchased the house from the original owner, who built it in 1935.
Wow.
Marion Hunter, still 106 years old, and so it's pretty original. It's good and bad.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing that, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion by the commission. Commissioner Carpenter?
I think we're looking at a really de minimis change for a really useful purpose, and I can see a very compelling argument for this being a practical difficulty.
Other comments? Mr. Fisher?
I would agree with Commissioner Carpenter that I think this is, what I oftentimes look for is, did the design solution, was it an over-design, and trying to come around and get a variance for an over-design on a site? You know, we just looked at the dimensions of this garage. This is really trying to minimally change the design to make it a functional, modern house while keeping the character, again, we're back to that neighborhood character thing. So I think there's a clear hardship here, given the current, the existing location of the garage. of the garage. They could flip this whole thing, do the driveway off Wooddale, they could solve this in a lot of different ways that would be, I would say detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. You know, can't help but think about all of the letters and emails we've been getting in the last several weeks about, and nothing against Eden Prairie, but Eden Prairie-style houses that are out of scale and feel out of character, and here's a, here's a way to, another way of approaching a site. And so, I would be in support of this.
Mr. Potts?
I agree with both those comments, and would also like to compliment the applicant for retaining as much of the existing house and adding on to it and not tearing another one down.
Other comments? Mr. Forrest?
I agree with that. I like the sustainability of this solution and also the fact that I think it's, it's a benefit to the community as a whole in that they are choosing to maintain the entrance off of 52nd and not onto Wooddale where it could affect traffic. So, I think there's a public benefit to that option versus, I think there's a public benefit to the, keeping the entrance to the garage on 52nd.
Other comments? Commissioner Staunton?
I guess I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the variance based on the staff conditions. One thing that I would add to that is just the notion that we do have a kind of a requirement for two-car garage. This one doesn't, as it exists, really have a usable two-car garage, and so it seems to me self-evident that it's a reasonable use. They have done the least possible change or encroachment in order to create that two-car garage, and so I would move that we grant the variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, the variance is granted. There is a, there is a two-week appeal period, so take that into mind. Okay. The next item on the agenda, preliminary plant plat, excuse me, Franklin and Carol Sedell, forty-two thirty-two Oakdale Avenue and forty-four twelve Morningside Road Edina.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, before you is an eight-lot subdivision with lot depth variances for three of the proposed eight lots. The property is located up in Morningside. It's on the west side of Morningside, right along the border with St. Louis Park. It's located between Littell Street and Morningside Road. The property is just over three acres in size. There's an existing single-family home right at the, where Oakdale and Littell come together. That home would remain as part of the subdivision. There is another home along Morningside here that would be removed. So, again, the two homes on the north and south end, and there's a scattering of accessory buildings in this location here. As you see, the property is heavily wooded. There are some steep slopes that run east-west through the property and along the west lot line. Here's the municipal boundary here with the majority of that slope in St. Louis Park. Want to mention, there was right-of-way located on the west side of this property when this area was all originally platted long ago. Littell was to extend into St. Louis Park, and this Naches Avenue was to extend to the north. The area highlighted in green here, this twenty-foot strip is actually located on the applicant's property, and that was vacated, we believe, sometime back in the 1950s. This twenty-foot strip here was recently requested for right-of-way vacation with the city of St. Louis Park, and that was granted on a first reading just last week. Property is owned R1, allows single-family homes, similar to the entire area here. Show you a couple of pictures of the site. This is standing at Littell, looking to the south. This is those slopes that run east-west, as you see. Another view. This is standing on Morningside. This is the home that would be removed. You can get an idea for some of the mature trees on the site. The cul-de-sac that's proposed, we'll see in a minute, this would be the location where that would come in off of Morningside. You see the existing home here to the east, and again, here's the home that would be removed. And this is along the west lot line, so this is the municipal boundary, and you can see the slopes here in the city of St. Louis Park. So, the request before the planning commission is a subdivision or preliminary plat of the property to create eight new lots out of the six that are existing out there today. And there are three lot depth variances. The required lot depth is one hundred and sixty-one feet, and three of the lots would not meet that depth, lots four, six, and seven. The minimum lot depth is established by the median within, all of the property within five hundred feet within the city of Edina. And again, the median is one hundred and sixty-one feet. The median lot area is just over nine thousand square feet. All of these lots would exceed that, and they would also meet the lot width requirement. So, in laying out a subdivision, what the applicant did initially was lay out a subdivision that meets all of our minimum zoning ordinance standards. And this is the configuration that meets all of our code requirements. It would be a street that would connect Morningside up to the north, and eight lots could be divided on this property that meets all of our standards. So, by right, they would be allowed eight, an eight-lot subdivision here. The next step that they took was how to minimize impacts on the site and potentially in the area. In particular, how can they preserve some of the mature trees on the site and not impact that steep slope that runs east-west, as we took a look at? So, this is the proposed layout of the subdivision. Again, the cul-de-sac coming in off of Morningside with homes, again, on the, that would be on the west side of the cul-de-sac. Within this area, they're also suggesting a permanent way to preserve those trees, and they would put all the area that you see located, highlighted in red, in a permanent conservation easement that would preserve those slopes and trees. So, there would be eighty-two trees preserved within that, within that easement. Again, you can see some of the slopes that would be, again, permanently protected. In looking at the code compliant plat, this would be the area that, where trees would be, could potentially be saved, there would be forty-two there. So, there, with the proposed cul-de-sac, savings of about forty mature trees on the site. And again, these slopes would also be permanently maintained, and with that through street, they would not. The applicant also looked at the possibility of putting in, I apologize, this is upside down from the other slides that we've seen, but here's Morningside Road up on the top. They considered constructing a cul-de-sac along the, what would be the west side of the property, in that area where the roadway was vacated. Decided against that, one for safety reasons with the close proximity to Oakdale here to the south. Also, the site gradually, the topography, it's higher on the east side, running to the west, so they're able to walk out lots with the other configuration. And also, the number of trees that could be saved aren't quite as much as with the configuration on the, with the road on the other side. Applicant provided a graphic of cul-de-sacs in the area. There are numerous cul-de-sacs in St. Louis Park to the west. The closest one in Edina would be to the south here on Oakdale. Number of concern has been raised by residents in the area in regard to traffic safety with the increase in traffic with the six additional homes. So, WSB was asked to do a traffic study to take a look at safety with cul-de-sac west side of the road, west side of the property versus east side, and just what the impacts would be with this new subdivision. And as indicated in your packet, the level of service wouldn't be impacted here. All the intersections and roads would continue to operate at a level of service of A or B. There's plenty of site, adequate sightlines here. The one thing that they are recommending is a stop sign at the end of the cul-de-sac, so vehicles approaching Morningside and before they enter onto Morningside, a stop sign would be, would need to be installed there. And again, Chuck is here to answer any questions in regard to traffic and safety. So, this is a look at the, at the proposed cul-de-sac. You'd note that there is an outlot proposed along the east side. This would be dedicated to that property where that new house that we saw in the picture to provide them a little bit more room. The home would maintain a fifteen-foot setback from this right-of-way here, which would meet our side street setback requirements. Consideration has also been talked about potentially reducing the width of the cul-de-sac, or at least the right-of-way, down to forty feet. That would be a possibility here. Could be an additional ten feet that would, could potentially go to the adjacent property or at least provide a little bit more setback there. It would be a twenty-five-foot setback. Also talked about with staff, the possibility of reducing the width of the proposed roadway down to possibly twenty-four feet. City engineer, public works director seemed okay with that concept prohibiting no parking on one side of the street. The fire, fire marshal, fire chief, if the homes were sprinkled, they'd be okay with the reduction in the width, but they were not quite sold on the reduced right-of-way, quite yet, anyway. Also want to point out, they're proposing a sidewalk along the west side of the road that would connect up to the existing sidewalk along Morningside. And just to quickly talk about how drainage would work within the subdivision, all of the homes here off of the roofs, they would drain toward the street, and the street would drain down to the end of the cul-de-sac. There would be a catch basin at the end, and drainage would be piped to a holding pond here, and overflow would potentially go to the west and then through a pipe into Littell. The Minnehaha Creek Watershed District is our regulatory agency for that, so they would, this whole plat would be subject to their review and approval and any conditions that they would put on that. In regard to park dedication, as I mentioned, there are six lots out there today, so the city is able to require park dedication for the two additional lots. That would be a total of $10,000, as the park dedication requirement is $5,000 each. So, with that, the primary issue for consideration here by the, by the planning commission, are the variances met to develop this site with a cul-de-sac as opposed to the code compliant plat? So, again, is looking at the variance criteria that we've talked about earlier this evening. Staff believes that the findings are met. The practical difficulties here would be those, the slopes that we looked at and the mature trees. It's reasonable to try to preserve those. This site is unique. It's, to find a three-acre parcel, especially in Morningside, that's undevelopable, definitely unique to the area. And the last criteria, will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? While certainly the subdivision as a whole is going to impact the, the character of the neighborhood, the variances that are requested here for that lot depth would not impact the character of the neighborhood. There are several, I believe in the twenties, lots that don't meet that one hundred and sixty-one foot depth. So, in conclusion, staff is supportive of variances to develop this property to minimize the impacts in the area. So, with that, staff can stand for questions. The applicant is here, as well as Chuck Rickert from WSB, to talk about traffic.
Carrie, would that street be dedicated to the city, or would that be a private street?
That would be a public street.
Public street.
Yeah. What you see as proposed would meet all of the city's minimum requirements for right-of-way and street width.
Okay. As long as you're here, would you care to discuss your findings with respect to traffic?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, didn't know if I was going to be able to talk there or not. It was kind of quiet. Carrie asked that I do a little traffic study looking at this eight-lot subdivision. It's, it's pretty unique to do something for so small because, you know, it just doesn't generate a lot of traffic. You know, eight units is just not a lot of additional traffic on the roadway system. Thus, the results of the operational part of this, that, you know, there really isn't any operational concerns at those intersections adjacent to the roadway. There's just, in those peak hours where the higher concentrations of traffic are, you know, adding, you know, six to eight, you know, vehicles, you know, on the roadway is very minimal, and it's not really going to impact those roadways. So, the operational part was, you know, very, very straightforward. The safety part, looking at, you know, some of the other pieces to this, looking at where the, where the cul-de-sac or the through street would come into Morningside, looking at the sightlines and so forth, you know, was a little bit more, you know, looking at that, you know, played a little bit more part in this. You know, looking at the profile of Morningside, you know, the curvature up and down of that road and where this cul-de-sac on the east side would go, there is plenty of, you know, sightline in both directions, you know, making, assuming that there's a clear line of sight from the stop, where the stop would be there, you know, if there's some trees that maybe would need to be cleared to ensure that, but, you know, that there is enough visual, you know, with the vertical on the roadway that you can see in either direction there. So, if you'd moved the cul-de-sac to the west, you know, to that, to the other location, it also would have clear sightlines, but the problem that you have with that situation is the left turns would be offsetting. So, if you're turning left onto Oakdale from Morningside and, or turning left into this new cul-de-sac there, they would be overlapping. So, there would be kind of a safety area there that would be by about fifty feet where you could potentially have a head-on collision. So, that, that is the safety concern about having those two intersections offset like that. If they were lined up, that may be a better location for an intersection, but since they're not, or they could not be lined up, then, you know, there is a safety concern there also. The through street versus the cul-de-sac, again, the amount of traffic that's generated from, from either, you know, isn't really going to be that, you know, that much different. However, with a through street, you obviously have the potential for additional cut-through. So, you may have some people not going down the lin or cutting through on that street, so there's that potential with the through street there. So, the traffic volume could go up in that case with a through street. So, that's really the only difference in the operations of the through street versus the cul-de-sac. That was very, very quick. Again, one other thing that I did recommend in here is that the house, you know, right on the, adjacent to this cul-de-sac, their driveway is very close to this new street. One option could be to move their driveway or have their driveway actually access off this new road, you know, if that would be practical or not, but that is an option to help that, the safety of the roadway versus where that driveway is.
Thank you. Questions of our traffic guru? Thank you, Mr. Rickert. Appreciate it.
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have, just a real quick question, just to clarify, if I understood correctly when Carrie was doing the initial introduction, you had, you have, do you have an opinion with respect to what the width of the cul-de-sac drive should be?
The roadway width?
Yeah.
Again, with six, six homes, you know, that would be access, a twenty-four-foot road would be sufficient for that. You know, I guess looking at the layout of the houses and, you know, parking or, you know, on the street or not on the street, I guess, depending on how deep their driveways are, if they have sufficient parking and driveways and so forth, that would be something that you maybe would want to look at. But a twenty-four-foot drive would be, you know, should be But a 24-foot drive would be, you know, should be adequate.
If we assume that there would be side-street parking taking place, does 24 feet still meet your?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the proponent please come forward and make a presentation?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name's Peter Knabli with Terra Engineering. Terra Engineering was the land planner and civil engineer hired for this project and we did all the preliminary work and engineering studies for the project that you see today. I just have a couple of quick comments. The staff did a excellent job in presenting the facts of the project and I'm also here with the owners of the property, Frank Seidel and Phil Seidel, so if you have any questions for them. We started meeting with the staff about the middle of June on this project. We were hired by the Seidel family to start doing land studies and doing some concept planning for them. And then immediately after that, we started meeting with the staff and getting the ideas on what's possible for the project. So we've been working on this project up till today for almost six months. So I think we've developed, the plan that you see today is a result of kind of numerous iterations and I think we've got a plan that satisfies the needs for the family, the needs for the neighborhood and the needs for the city of Edina in general. We've also had neighborhood meetings. We've had a neighborhood meeting specifically for the immediate neighbors that butt up to the property. We had that at the owner's home and discussed the project, the alternatives that we're looking at and received feedback from them. We further developed the plan and then had an overall neighborhood meeting with the neighbors within 500 feet. That's kind of the legal limit. So we invited all those neighbors to a bigger neighborhood meeting, again, presented the project and took feedback and again, used that input to affect what we're presenting to you tonight. Just a couple of further clarifications. Again, on the conforming plat that we showed, we're showing just a through-street. Again, it's a project or a concept that we're not kind of advocating on our part. We know it's buildable, it's, you know, kind of approvable from a city point of view. It meets all the standards, no variances are required. We don't think it's the best use of the property, but obviously if the variances are not approved, we would look, relook at what that option is. But again, from our point of view, we certainly prefer the cul-de-sac option versus the through-street. And the, the conforming plat or the through-street plat, just in regards to the, the difference between that and the cul-de-sac, like is mentioned in the staff report, there's a significant additional grading just to get that street down that steep hill. We estimate about 25% to 26% additional site grading just to build that through-street versus the cul-de-sac that we're proposing. There's also almost half an acre of additional grading just in the steep slope area of the site, you know, with the through-street option. And then thirdly, the amount of additional pervious areas, almost 10,000 square feet of additional pervious with the through-street option. And for those three reasons, we thought those were significant enough to look at the, at the cul-de-sac and request those relatively minor variances for those lot depths. And we think that's a reasonable trade-off. Again, on the cul-de-sac plan that we're proposing, if you, if you kind of study the lot areas that we're proposing, the lots vary from 10,000 square feet up to 23,000 square feet. The neighborhood median is about 9,600, so we exceed that. Our average lot size is about 14,000 square feet, so we're almost 50% greater than what the neighborhood median is. On lot depths, our lots, our lot, average lot depth is about 87 feet wide. Again, the median in the neighborhood is 50 feet, so again, we exceed that by almost 75%. So on lot areas and lot width, we greatly exceed the neighborhood median. On lot depth, our average lot depth is about 156 feet. Again, the median lot depth for the 500-foot neighborhood is 161, so that's about 3% less on average than what we're proposing. But if you look at what the city zoning minimum is for lot depth, it's 125 feet. So our average 156 greatly exceeds that city minimum, but we're about 3% under on average the neighborhood mean. And just lastly, just to clarify, we've had, we understand that the way the roads proposed, the east cul-de-sac is preferred for a number of reasons. We looked at, again, the option of an eastern cul-de-sac was more on the Edina and St. Louis Park border, but we kind of determined the same issues that the city's traffic engineer determined, that there's significant safety issues with the offset cul-de-sac. The way the two roads would line up, there's about a 50-foot offset between the two center lines for the north, north and south street. And most city, cities have a minimum spacing of 125 feet. They don't want to see those roads any closer than 125 feet. And again, this one would be about 50 to 53 feet. Our road's over 200 feet from that existing road, so we greatly exceed that minimum standard. But we do understand that there's an impact to the immediate neighbor adjacent to where our roads proposed on the east side. And we looked at, you know, a number of ways to kind of mitigate that. The main one we're proposing, again, as shown on the plats, is a nine-to-10-foot outlot immediately adjacent. And our proposal, again, is to plot that as an outlot, to deed that directly to that landowner at no cost. So it would expand their property from a 50-foot lot to a 60-foot, 60-foot lot. The second thing we would do in addition to deeding that outlot to the neighbor is to prepare a detailed heavily landscape, landscape plan for that outlot. And we would, as part of the construction of the road, we would implement that landscape plan to provide significant buffering between the street and the existing home. And again, we would do that as part of the development cost. And then thirdly, again, as recommended in the traffic study and in the staff report, we would propose to relocate the driveway from the existing home onto the new cul-de-sac street, if that's the recommendation of the city. And we would certainly do that, again, as part of the development cost, so there wouldn't be any additional charge to the neighborhood. So I think those three things don't alleviate the issue entirely for the neighbor, but we think it helps significantly to mitigate that issue from the neighbor. And with that, Frank Seidel, the owner of the property, just wants to introduce himself and say a few words and then we're here just to answer any questions that the planning commission has.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, my name's Frank Seidel. I live at 4232 Oakdale Avenue, so that would be on the north end of this project. My house is the one that's going to continue to be there and I am going to continue to live in it. So I, I think that's a, an important factor that this whole project is being planned around family members that are going to continue to live in the, in the neighborhood. My brother, Dr. Phil Seidel, is sitting behind me here. He lives on Lynn Avenue. He will also continue to live in the neighborhood. The other Seidel you haven't met is my sister, Tina Rhodey. She is a Eden Prairie person, so.
Way to go, Mike.
Yeah. Didn't want to put you on the spot. But spends quite a bit of time in the neighborhood and grew up there. The Seidel family has owned that, the north side of that property for 50 years and the south side, the part that my wife and I own for about 30 years now. So we're longtime Morningside residents and we really are, care about the Morningside community and, and want to try to do the right thing for, for the Morningside community. The, the, the project was, was undertaken on the request of my parents. My father's since passed away and my mother's almost 90 years old. We, we realized that with the age of, of, of my mother, and she's still in great health and, and doing quite well and still lives in the, in the house that you saw on the drawing that's going to be demolished eventually, we, we as a family needed to begin a plan to do something with this property. It could have been anything, including sell it to a developer or another owner and let them take it over. But because of our, our belief in the community, because Phil and I are going to maintain our, our residences in the community, because we, the family, want to do the right thing for the community, we've undertaken this project on our own to try to see if we can come up with a plan that maintains the integrity as best we can. I know that's a big change, but we believe that we're, we've come up with a plan that, that maintains that integrity. Unfortunately, when we did our research on the, on the, on the project, we found that the value of the land is a whole lot more than the value of the house. And I know that that's a problem that many of my, my fellow Edina residents are facing these days and, and, you know, I, I feel for them and we as a family are disappointed that we have to tear our, the house that we grew up in down in order to make this project happen, but there doesn't seem to be another way. We, we feel that our plan is the best in, in, in that it helps maintain the peaceful integrity of the neighborhood. We feel that, that it's the best use of the natural slope of the land, as, as Mr. Knabli said and as, as Mr. Teague has, has mentioned as well. We also feel that it, it enables saving of the, the most, the number of the mature trees, which is a very important part for us as well. It's a, it's a nicely wooded lot and I know all the neighbors appreciate that. So with that, I, I'd, I'm available for questions. The family's available for questions and we, we appreciate the time that you've given us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seidel. Are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Forrest?
I was wondering if, is it Mr. Knabli? How do you pronounce, Knabli? Okay, I was thinking the right thing. If you could just point out roughly on the diagram that's still up there, where the slopes are that are greater than 18%?
Yeah, they're basically on the back part of the property where the trees are and those are the areas that we're going to maintain and also on the western edge of the property.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point for the proponent or the applicant? I keep saying proponent, it's the applicant. Very good. Thank you very much. We, oh, you have a question. Pardon me.
Just on the trees, the, you know, you have the preservation plan for the, behind where you're going to build, but what about the trees? Is there a plan, you know, where, are you going to, I hope you're not going to clearcut the whole area in front with the cul-de-sac. Are you planning on preserving some of those, what you can, and essentially building around those? Or how, how are the ones nearer the road or where the, the houses are proposed, how are the trees in there going to be accounted for?
Yeah, that's correct. There is a, kind of a building pad area and then the tree conservation area behind that. What we're proposing as part of this development, I think we note that in our grading plan, is that we're only going to build this cul-de-sac itself as part of our initial grading for the project. We'd only grade what we have to to get the street, the sidewalks and the utilities in. We wouldn't do any lot grading as part of the initial development. All lots would be custom graded by the builder to fit the proposed home. We've had better luck doing that than trying to, trying to mass grade the sites and then trying to fit the homes to the lots that we build. We have better luck saving trees by letting the builders design their homes around the existing trees. So each lot's going to be custom graded.
Would there, so there'd be requirement on the builders then to try and save as many trees on that lot they have?
Absolutely.
But that would be a piece going with, with the land purchase agreement? That would be a condition on that?
Typically it is, yeah. We're going to be, the way I understand it with the, the family, is that they may or may not be the ultimate developer of the property. They're planning it now so they can control how the project's ultimately, ultimately going to look, but they're not going to be the, necessarily the builders of each home on the property. But they, they would work with the builders or developer on putting together any restrictive covenants that would control where homes go, what trees could save, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Thank you. Others who wish to address this issue?
Hi, I'm Rick Hardy. I'm 4408 Morningside. My wife's Sarah. We are the home directly adjacent to the property that you saw in the picture there. We, as Carrie gets this up here, I've got a few things that we'd like to point out and talk about. As he's doing that, you know, the first thing I'll say is, we did submit a letter that I think all of you got in your packets detailing kind of our comprehensive concerns, issues and, and even some things that we appreciate about what Frank and the rest of the family is proposing on this. Just to, to show where we are on the, the map here, so we're directly to the east of the proposed development. We've been there for less than a year. In fact, we moved into the house about a year ago today. We bought the lot from a member of the Seidel family and went forward and developed over the last year and a half or so. So, you know, safe to say we're kind of uniquely and disproportionately impacted by this proposal, most specifically the road. And that's the thing that we're going to talk the most about today and we do have a couple of other things that we, we'd like to bring up. So, you know, again, we've talked a lot to Frank, specifically to the family, about the development. We appreciate kind of the considerations to date, also have had some time with Carrie back and forth, which has helped as well. Some of the considerations have been mentioned. We appreciate those. Unfortunately, we still have some pretty major concerns that we don't think are fully addressed and, and certainly alleviated from an impact perspective to what, you know, for our property specifically and some for the neighborhood as well. So want to talk a little bit about the road and, and at the end, talk a little bit about sort of the, the question that you started to get to, which is, what's actually going to happen if this gets replatted and developed and sort of what that construction's going to look like and, and the impact to the neighborhood? The first thing I wanted to talk about was just property value. So the way we look at this, this really transforms our lot from a middle of the block lot to a corner lot. It's a lot with a road on two sides. And that is going to basically require or strongly suggest a change to the character of our house. Our driveway was mentioned. That's the driveway that runs directly to the east and almost the full length of our property to access Morningside Road today, to change that to access the new cul-de-sac road. It basically makes our side yard a front yard. Luckily, our garage happens to face that way because we built the house in a way that, you know, we didn't want a garage facing the street and we tried to deal with that with our lot. So there's a little bit of fortune in that. However, the house is brand-new, so, you know, we really have no opportunity in the near future at all to change the character of our house. A change to the driveway would change the way our porch is, kind of sits, the way our front door is accessed. You know, it really changes the house that we just designed and built. So, and, and, you know, frankly, the, the value of the outlot at this point is there to meet the minimum setback requirement of 15. It's a pretty small buffer and that kind of gets us to the next point, which shows on here really kind of where the road would actually sit in relation to our house and this property. 15 feet to the right-of-way is pretty close. And so from our perspective, when we look at the traffic report that, that says 80 new cars or so per day going up and down that street, plows, day and night, feels really close. Also, the house wasn't designed to have a road on that side, so you have living space, bedrooms, offices right on that side. And that runs the entire length of our lot, obviously, because of the way it sits. So we appreciate the landscaping that was offered. We appreciate certainly the buffer that's there. We just don't feel like it's nearly enough and we don't. We just don't feel like it's nearly enough, and we don't feel like the landscaping is going to provide the kind of mitigation to the quality of life issues, noise, air, light pollution. How do we change that? So, the west-side road was talked about. That's clearly our preference. We feel like the intersection is logical with Oakdale. The recently vacated right-of-way on the St. Louis Park side, it's still there. It's vacated, but the 20 feet is still there. There's a slope. The topography of the land on that side really buffers all the houses there, plus those are all backyards coming into the new road. So, we feel that the impact is more proportionally put in place with the road on the other side. And also, the property values are already taken into account, the fact that there was a right-of-way there and, you know, a road could have been put there. So, and then the last thing is, you know, the proposed cul-de-sac on the west side doesn't change the buildability. It doesn't change the number of lots they can get out of this. It really preserves its mirror image. Now, our second thought is if, you know, the west-side road isn't something that can be done, is to just move the road further west. You know, the proposal as it is right now is the absolute minimum that that road has to be from our house to meet code. Doesn't have to be that way. Every additional foot that this road moves to the west is going to provide a huge impact to us in terms of, we feel, our property value, our quality of life. So, we'll take every foot we can get. What's shown here is actually a drawing that moves the road about 15 feet more to the west. It actually preserves the location of the cul-de-sac because the road was offset to the kind of the bulb of the cul-de-sac. And it does reduce three of the lots, the depth of those lots, but they're still about 145 feet or so with this drawing. And so, that would, we don't feel sort of change the value of those lots much or change the buildability, especially because there's already that tree conservation easement on the back of those lots, which you couldn't build on anyway. So, that is, you know, another option. The narrower road, which was mentioned, is something that's kind of come up over the last couple of days. Don't know for sure if that's a possibility, but certainly, as I said, any additional foot to us is worth it. So, we would certainly support that in addition to any of these other things that we propose. But we'd just love that road to be further away from our house. So, the last thing I'm going to talk about is kind of this construction management plan. I know as part of the recommendation that the staff put out that there would be a construction management plan. I think this one is a little unique compared to the other things that were contemplated in the construction management plans that floated around and I think was talked about a little bit. This is going to be a new road, new utilities, seven new homes on, you know, a fairly concentrated piece of property in a residential neighborhood that's already fairly densely populated. So, if you think about those homes being developed serially, we could be looking at three, four years of construction for all of that to happen. That obviously impacts us greatly, but I think the greater neighborhood also would appreciate consideration of how that's actually going to play out, and is there a way for us to concentrate whatever development happens here in a way that minimizes the length of time? The other issue is around construction hours, behavior, and all of those things that I think a lot of people here will probably talk about. I know you guys have read a lot of letters about and probably talked to people about. You know, we built a house in this neighborhood, so we get it. We were, you know, maybe one of the people that caused some of that, but we actually think our builders were pretty good. But it is an issue for the neighborhood. It's going to be a big issue when you talk about seven new homes and, you know, the time period and all that. So, you know, we feel like that really needs to be looked at and looked at pretty strongly, and something that we definitely support making part of any approval here. And the last thing is consideration of neighborhood character. I think some people are going to talk about that as well. Morningside is a great neighborhood, great neighborhood character. That's why we decided to live there. We feel like we built a house that fit into that, but we also know that there's some people in the neighborhood that don't feel like we did that. We understand that we can't legislate taste, but we do hope to see something that happens here, and we support, certainly support what the Seidels want to do in terms of trying to preserve the character of the neighborhood and any new homes that get built here. So, anything that we can do to support that, we'd love to do that. So, that's the end for us, and we appreciate the consideration and the time and diligence in this.
Others wish to address this issue, please?
Good evening. My name is Angela Dean, and we live on Morningside Road, down the road from the proposed subdivision. Our address is 4301 Eaton Place. I saw the new construction management plan, and I've also heard from some of you that there will be more communication to homeowners. This may work for remodels and straightforward tear-down rebuilds, but a subdivision is a completely different level of development in Morningside. My input for you tonight is that approving this subdivision, even with added management plans, negatively impacts our quality of life in many ways. First, though, let me go over a couple of the benefits of the subdivision. One property owner will benefit financially if this property is leveled and subdivided into eight lots. And one builder will benefit by making a lot of money building seven new homes, and they can make even more money if they maximize the lot size and bypass building a house that fits into the character of the neighborhood. Clearly, two parties will do well, but there are 750 homes in Morningside. That's a lot of people. Thousands of other people are here. And how will our lives be impacted if the subdivision is approved? Well, I think there are five main ways that I see our quality of life really slipping if this happens and possibly permanently damaged. The first that was talked about is the loss of morning size aesthetic. Originally developed as a separate village, Morningside's character is distinct from other parts of Edina. Properties here do not fit the country-club zoning mold, and a cul-de-sac and suburban-style subdivision do not fit into this area and will change the face of Morningside. Number two, loss of decades-old trees.
And what I saw here is that in the survey, there were 200, over 200 trees on this property right now, and the estimate is to remove nearly 50% of the trees, which I think is rather significant. We will never again see trees of this size in our lifetime, and this is another huge loss to our neighborhood.
Number three, loss of property value. I counted at least eight homes in St. Louis Park that line up to this development, at least five homes in Morningside that will look at a cul-de-sac and new construction rather than a forest. And the storm-water runoff down this sloped property will likely be problematic. Number four, degradation of our roads from construction traffic. I counted 60 houses on Morningside Road, and in the letter we received from the city, each household may have to pay $5,000 to $10,000 to redo utilities and roads. Why are we paying for the roads that are highly damaged by large-scale construction? Number five, finally, if such a hugely devastating leveling of property is allowed, how could new construction be controlled elsewhere? We fear this subdivision sets the ultimate precedent that Morningside's trees, waters, and historic homes can be permanently removed with little oversight. From my observations so far, builder-driven new construction has predominantly consisted of nearly identical, oversized, and crowded-together homes. Lots of people mentioned Eden Prairie tonight. That's what we see with the new construction in Morningside. So, a couple of weeks ago, when the mayor talked to us about the changes in Edina, I get that. I get the change happens in a community over time, but that doesn't mean we should approve negative change, and in this case, on a large scale and over a very short period of time, too short for any of these updates to policy to take place, especially when it benefits only two parties at the expense of the rest of us. So, if anything is heard from what I've said tonight, let it be this. It is known that the property owner would prefer to sell the property as a single lot to a single family if the price is right. I propose that this avenue is pursued, has not been given a chance to be put for sale yet. This would allow the property owner to still benefit financially rather than a subdivision with so many negative consequences to the vast majority of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Good evening. My name is Katrina McDonald. I live at 4257 Ottawa Avenue South. That's on the west side of the Seidel's property. I am a St. Louis Park resident. However, my property adjoins the proposed subdivision. I'm speaking on behalf of several other homeowners on our street, Ottawa Avenue South. Although change is often difficult, and our properties will be impacted by the proposed subdivision, we feel the proposed plan is the best option for the entire community for the following reasons. First of all, a proposed cul-de-sac has a much smaller environmental impact than a through-street. As mentioned, there will be twice as much impervious area for a through-street as a cul-de-sac, therefore, we feel that the cul-de-sac would be a better option for that reason. Through-street require many more trees to be removed, especially on the steep slope areas on the north and west side of the properties. A through-street require a much greater amount of land disturbance, especially in the low area where it would connect to Latel Street. There would be a lot of fill in that area, possibly retaining walls or steep slope embankments. Second, the proposed location of the cul-de-sac on the east side of the property is the best location for an entrance to subdivision for the following reasons. The proposed location places the road on the crest of a hill, therefore offering better sightlines that are safer for cars and pedestrians. The proposed cul-de-sac will be equal distance between the existing Morningside intersections with Lynn Avenue and Ottawa Avenue South. The proposed location is on high, flat ground, which reduces the amount of grading and ground disturbance required to install the street and the associated infrastructure. The east-side cul-de-sac option allows a developer to preserve the substantial mature tree growth located on the west side of the property, and the proposed plan allows homes to have a walkout basement. We believe a west-side cul-de-sac option is not in the best interest of the entire community. A west-side cul-de-sac would not line up with the existing Oakdale Avenue as stated, creating a dangerous intersection that's non-conforming, and it would also have less favorable sightlines to the east looking up the hill of Morningside. In addition, the topography on the west-side slope, especially as you hit the end of the cul-de-sac, may require retaining walls and excessive grading to have the cul-de-sac be built on the west side of the property. Finally, the lots created by a west-side cul-de-sac would be less desirable tuck-under lots compared with walkout basements. We feel the reasons listed above demonstrate a significant weight of evidence that the proposed subdivision plan, the cul-de-sac on the east side, is a much better option for the entire community than either a through-street or a west-side cul-de-sac layout. We would also like to express our thanks to the Seidel family and their engineer, Mr. Peter Knably, for their extraordinary efforts to communicate with all neighbors affected by the proposal, regardless of jurisdiction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Good evening. I'm Pete Killalay, 4236 Lynn. Was really excited to hear about the committee that you all have started to reassess zoning in the city, and would just like to understand what that means relative to this proposal. Certainly don't begrudge the Seidels developing this property. I do the same thing about students, and, you know, think they're trying to do it in a responsible way, but there seems to be pretty broad and clear understanding of concerns about the type of new construction in the neighborhood. So, I'd just like to understand how these two things fit together, and if this proposal is accepted now, does that mean they're grandfathered in to existing new construction and zoning requirements, which seem to be problematic? Thanks a bunch.
Was it Kelly?
Killalay.
Killalay. Thank you.
My name is Greg Anderson. I live at 4212 Oakdale, about five houses north of the Seidels. I'd like to commend the Seidels to try to be as sensitive as they can to the neighborhood. I can certainly respect, and being a neighborhood dweller as well, I can respect all the comments from the neighbors that'll be affected by this property and this property's change. I believe Mr. Teague's comments earlier, they can build the property as originally, or redevelop the property with the through-street. I think the effect on the property overall would be significant, and you, as a planning commission tonight, have the opportunity to use the variance tool, in this instance, to do what's right for the redevelopment of this property, and I hope you choose to approve the variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
My name is Connie Wild, and I live at 4413 Morningside Road, and we are located directly across the street from the current home and where the development is proposed. I recognize that our view is going to change, that our world, our space is changing. I recognize that, and I understand that. But as an impacted neighbor, and as impacted as I am, living directly across the street from the current home, I am here to advocate for connected streets and continuous sidewalks, specifically continuous sidewalks. My husband and I moved to this neighborhood 12 years ago because it is an urban community with sidewalks. This community is generally plotted on a grid system. Morningside was a village. It's a grid-system neighborhood. We did not look to buy a home in West Edina or other outlying suburbs. We wanted an urban community with sidewalks, and that's what we love most about living in Morningside. We are very invested in this neighborhood. We have three young children, and I want my kids to be able to walk from our home on a sidewalk directly to their friends living on Lower Oakdale to increase those communications, to increase those networks, to those, to be able to walk directly on a sidewalk to the friends that live on 42nd Street. The kids in the neighborhood should be able to take a sidewalk to directly access the public land available to them in the neighborhood. One thing that hasn't been mentioned is that there is a city lot on the corner of Latel and Lynn that is undeveloped, owned by the city. It's available to the community as a play space, a recreation space. It's available to the community. Much of the community doesn't even know that it's available to them because it has appeared to be part of the Seidel property on Latel Street or Lower Oakdale. So, I want to point that out, that there's a unique opportunity to provide additional connections and sidewalks to that available space in the public. So, okay, the cul-de-sac plan does not provide an opportunity to accommodate sidewalks. There's no sidewalk on Latel Street. So, the way they've presented the cul-de-sac plan, they have not included any sidewalk along this first lot or along the city lot, and I think that should be considered. They have offered a half a sidewalk from the residence out to Morningside Road. By ending the sidewalk, it creates one-way traffic, benefiting only the new homeowners. It does not encourage a walkable community, and that is what the city of Edina values from their comprehensive plan. I understand that development is important and inevitable. I understand that this is going to change. But as a cul-de-sac, this project doesn't benefit the entire community, and it's not equitable. It creates an extended hardship for residents on Morningside Road. You're creating an exclusive community. The chairperson genuinely asked, is this a private road? It seems like a private community, a private gated community. As a cul-de-sac, the Morningside Road residents are going to see 100% of the traffic funneled their way all the time, as mentioned, the years of construction, wear and tear on our roads, the cost of which the residents, the current residents, are going to have to bear. So, as current residents, if we pay for this project, I feel we, at a minimum, should receive the benefits of connections and sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wild.
My name is Patricia Goodwin, and I'm at 4417 Morningside Road on the corner of Oakdale and Morningside, directly across from the Sidell property. I've lived in the neighborhood for 22 years, and I've seen a lot of change, a lot of houses torn down. And I think it's all been good because I like the younger families moving in and, you know, the turnover. I am concerned about the subdivision. I guess I didn't, I don't quite understand why the density of six, eight homes needs to be there. I guess that question, in my mind, has not been answered unless it's just that, you know, the value of that area is $4 million, and that's the only way you're going to be able to, the family's going to be able to get that, that much money. So I'm concerned about the density. And then with the traffic person, you know, talking about with six homes, it'd only be six cars. Well, we just talked that all homes in Edina have to have two-car garages. So I know there's going to be a lot more cars than just six going up and down that cul-de-sac, if that's, that's what we end up doing. And also, I don't know, but I, I guess I missed the letter that the other person mentioned, that we would end up paying for the road and utilities in there. So I'm concerned that I didn't get that letter, and I'd like to, I'd like to have that information. And then, as listening to the, on Sunday night, I guess early Monday morning at 3:00, when the snow people that you've hired to keep that property clean came through and were shoveling, and I couldn't sleep. I can't imagine with the construction management thing, how this is going to be. And I'm really concerned about that. And I had hoped to live in this home for a few more years, but I'm not going to be able to withstand four years of construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin.
Good evening. My name is Jen Colburn. I live at 4312 Branson Road. So I am kind of around the block from the proposed property. My question is, we've had many mentions to the character of the neighborhood and how the family would like to maintain the character. My question is, how does this plan actually do that? Because at this point, the plan is to, this is the proposed lots, but then the lots can be sold off to builders who can then build whatever they want. And so my concern is that the character of the neighborhood is not actually addressed, again with front trees, front garages. And again, not to belabor the point of suburban Eden Prairie, but if there's not anything within this plan that dictates what can or can't be built, that's what we'll end up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colburn.
Mike Pearson, 4247 Lynn. Just want to clarify just a couple of things. One with Carrie, saying that the end of Oakdale is a cul-de-sac. That's actually a dead-end street. So to be prevailing through the neighborhood, there are zero cul-de-sacs. So prevailing should be a through-street. That would be my only suggestion there. And I think Mr. Knabli has proven to us that they can do a through-street with zero variance. So they've already told us that it can be done, and I think we should do that. If there's any issue on the slope, every street from Lynn almost all the way down to Scott Terrace has that same sloping road that they've managed to develop over 50 years. So I think it's, again, it can be done and without any issue with any of the issues they might have, drainage or anything like that. Okay? And so the last thing I'd say is that we need, to go ahead and have the development, that's fine. There's not a problem there. But to always look at the fact that variance is there for hardship and for true hardship. And again, we don't have that. So we need to keep in line that when we look at these projects throughout the city, that we look at that, what works within the boundaries that are already set first, and not come in saying, I want to change it without trying to show that, yeah, we can do it. Let's work within the guidelines. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Hello. My name is Jim Wild, and I'm a resident for 12 years. And my wife Connie already spoke, and many neighbors with a similar view of mine posing the variance request. And the more that we've been involved with discussing this, the one thing I did find that I was interested to learn was the comprehensive plan that the City of Edina has on their website. And the more you read through that, it makes you feel good to live in a neighborhood that has such a thing. But the one thing that really stood out to me was in the goals and policies, future land use plan, and community design guidelines. Number one is protect and preserve the essential character of existing residential neighborhoods. So if you've been to Edina-Morningside and have been in the quadrant we live in, it is built with connecting streets, with sidewalks, with the accessibility to go from neighbor to neighbor and walk down the sidewalks. And all I see from this cul-de-sac is an exclusive neighborhood with inside Edina that shows qualities of other neighborhoods that aren't Edina-Morningside. So I'm opposed of the cul-de-sac and would prefer to see a conforming plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild.
I'm Jim Schwert. I live at 4231-
Sorry, please.
Oh, sorry. I live at 4231 Oakdale Avenue South, across from Frank. It's the, right at the corner of Lower Oakdale and Littell Street. I support Frank's proposal. I would, I would be opposed to a through-street. A through-street there would basically empty out right where my front yard is. And I'm concerned about, I'm not concerned about six homes so much, but I am concerned about that Oakdale becoming a artery for cars passing, not from the neighborhood, but passing through to get up to other streets in the area. There are lots of kids in the neighborhood who play in the street. One of the unique aspects of our neighborhood is that it is not a through-street. It is an L-shaped street. And there are, while people often walk down the street and come through it who don't live in the area, there aren't many cars that go through it. And putting a through-street there is going to bring, it may have connectivity as far as people walking, which I think is a great thing. My wife and I walk around the area a lot. But I am concerned about the increased car activity by adding another through-street through there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwert.
Good evening. My name is Doug Junker. I live at 4216 Oakdale Avenue, which is about four houses north of this development. I've been here about 17 years in that house. And I'd like to support, show my support for the Sidell proposal. I like it because it minimizes the hard surfaces that are, that are there, that, that will be added. It maximizes the additional green space. And it seems like it's going to maintain the traffic flow a little bit more than a through-street there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Junker.
Hello. My name is David Dean. I, I live on 4301 Eaton Place, which also is a corner of Morningside Road, which the proposed property is, proposed development is going to take place on. My wife and I bought a 1931 house. And so we went in with the intention of remodeling and preserving the character and, and the age of the house itself. And we've lived there for almost two years now. And so we're enjoying the house that was originally there, that was built in 1931. So we, and I speak for myself and my wife, we're of the sentiment that you can preserve the existing home. And so we're in opposition to the development of the Sidell property. But I was going to ask two questions, actually. The first, it seems like the bulk of the discussion has been as if it's a foregone conclusion that there's going to be a cul-de-sac built. And so I just wanted some clarity on that because I thought we were here to actually discuss the options. And it seems to me that there would be more than just the cul-de-sac versus a through-street. The second question I have is, what are the plans as far as the bidding process for the builders? Because if it's such that just one builder, builder comes in and is willing to pay for the entire lot, then we can have the situation where every single house, even though they're different houses, will have the exact same character. And so I am asking those two questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll handle those questions in a bit. But the answer to the first question is the cul-de-sac is what the proposal is. So that's before us, the application. So that's why we're focusing on the cul-de-sac. Anyone else wish to address this issue? I knew there'd be somebody.
Hi. My name is Seth Hanula. I'm at 4307 Oakdale. I just have a question. So as we are talking about the impact of the cul-de-sac, I'm actually in favor of a through-street because that would keep the integrity of the neighborhood. Once again, there is no other cul-de-sac in Morningside. And including cul-de-sacs from another municipality is a little misleading. But my question is, with the cul-de-sac, we're talking about the impact being minimized that way. But there is another lot on that proposed plan down on Littell. So I don't think the impact is as great as we think on a through-street, considering there's going to be another lot on Littell. So that's my question. Have we looked at that as a concern as well? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Was it Hanula?
Hanula.
Hanula. Okay. Clean my ears up. Anyone else wish to address this? I see Mr. Porter back there, but I'm not going to call him this time. Mr. Knabli?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of, just quick comments. Couple of things that I heard. Again, I picked up, the first thing when we heard from the Hardees, again, we've met with them, and they're, we understand they're the home that's obviously impacted by where our proposed cul-de-sac is going to go. We did hear the option for the proposed 40-foot right-of-way instead of the 50. That's showing as part of our plan. The reason we have the 50-foot right-of-way and the 27-foot wide street within that 50-foot right-of-way is because that's what the City of Edina's street standard is. So that's why we're designing it that way. But we would certainly, from my point of view and from the owner's, the family's point of view, we would support a 40-foot cul-de-sac moving it over, adding that additional 10 feet to the outlet that would be on the Hardy's side. We've talked to the family about that, and they said that is acceptable to them. So we think that would be a significant improvement. It would add additional space to provide a deeper and more significant buffer in between the two homes. So again, 40-foot and the street from 27 down to 24, we'd certainly support that, too. Parking on one side would be acceptable to the family as part of the building process. So again, that 40-foot right-of-way, we would support that if the planning commission and city council would recommend that to us. A couple of other things I heard. One comment was, who's going to pay for the road? Is that going to be paid for by the neighborhood? And it's not. I mean, 100% of this project, the cost of the road, the cost of the utilities, the grading, the sidewalks is going to be paid for by the development itself. There's not going to be any assessment to the neighborhood. And then thirdly, there was a, I heard the question, is there going to be one builder? Is there going to be multiple builders? And at this point, again, we're only asking for preliminary plot approval for the street, the shape of the lots, the location of the public road. We're not here for any building permits, building requirements. And I don't think the family knows yet. I think it's too early to say if it's going to be a single builder or multiple builders. So I don't think we can, we're able to answer that yet. And then lastly, from the idea of whether a through-street is buildable or not, I think I mentioned earlier that we could build that street. I don't think the, based on my calculations for what the impacts would be, that it would be something that we would necessarily do if we had another option. Again, the impacts are 26% additional site grading, 23% additional impervious, and then about another acre of disturbance of that steep slope. And again, we can, as a civil engineer, we could build any road you want. But I don't think you'd probably want that one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knabli. If it's brief.
I just have one comment, just to make sure. The, the impact on Morningside Street that people are addressing is the amount of construction vehicles that are going to be coming up and down that street wrecking the street. We understand that you're willing to pay for the cul-de-sac you would develop. But the concern we want to put in front of the commission is that, my understanding on how we currently fix streets in Morningside is the residents are assessed based on the damage of the street. I live in a very modest home across from this development. And a $10,000 to $15,000 assessment is a chunk of change I'm not looking forward to paying, especially based on the road being mostly damaged from these larger vehicles coming up and down for the construction purpose. So I just want to put that out there. Thanks.
Well, all, all of the streets in town get redone periodically, and the residents pay for them. I just paid $13,000 for my street. So that's what happens in the City of Edina. I'm not saying that's the way it ought to be, but that's the way it is, you know? I'd make a pitch that it ought to be citywide. Mr. Sidell.
Hi. Phil Sidell, 4221 Lynn. I was, had the honor of growing up in the house on 4412. We moved in there when I was one, so 52 years ago. The Hardy House, I had the opportunity of living in the house that was previously there, as did my sister. It's where I proposed to my wife. Morningside was a next into Edina in '66. I vividly remember growing up, and, oh, you're from Morningside, almost like Eden Prairie, but you're from Morningside. Now thriving Morningside, demand Morningside. What an amazing problem you have that people want to build huge, monstrous houses and redo the area. Granted, maybe it's not what people are looking in with keeping. But what a great thing that the community is thriving. I walk to work almost every day. I say hi to dogs. I say hi to patients. It's a great spot to be. We would love to see a person come in and buy our homestead. We have talked with real estate agents. The Hardees set us up with another real estate agent to see if that would happen. So far, they have not come forward. We would love to see that happen. Right now, we don't want to see this clear cut, as people have said. We would like to see it developed nicely as best we can. That's what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sidell. Anyone else who's not spoken wish to address this? Yeah, I'll take a motion then to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, discussion. Questions? Questions? The one question that was not answered, we talked about the cul-de-sac, we talked about the through street, we talked about several of the questions that were raised. The one question that was not answered, and maybe Mr. Knably can talk about, I think it was Mr. Kolberg asked, you know, how does this preserve the character of the neighborhood? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that's a good question. And I think it can be answered in a couple of different ways. One is the, to max, to preserve the character of the neighborhood, to me, would be to maximize the existing amenities that are on the property. And for the most part, those are the, the natural amenities are the trees and the steep slopes. And I think the proposal that we're presenting doesn't, we're not expecting to keep every tree, but we think that proposal, given the other options, would maximize the savings of the existing trees and maximize the existing steep slopes on and on the property. So I think that fits into the character of the neighborhood, the character of the buildings that are going to be proposed for these new lots versus the character of the neighborhood. I'm not going to be designing or rebuilding those, so I guess I'm not able to answer that. And I don't know if anybody even in the neighborhood could say, given what the turnover is in the neighborhood, what the current character of the Morningside neighborhood is.
Thank you. Discussion, questions, discussion, comments by the commission? Carrie?
Just one other question, I believe, that was asked that I don't think we've answered is the zoning ordinance work that we're undertaking now, how that would impact, how this development would be impacted by that.
Mr. Kalali's comment.
Kilali.
Kilali.
Any changes that are forthcoming would apply to all of these properties, just like any other lot within the City of Edina. So should this development get approved in whatever form that it may get approved in, would be subject to any changes that might be made to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Staunton?
Assuming it's before anything's built.
Correct.
Before they apply. I mean, so it's just a chronological, we make a change to the zoning code before there's an application for a building permit or a variance or the like. It's whatever is in effect then.
Correct.
Other comments?
Chair Graeble.
Commissioner Fisher.
I just wanted, there are a couple of things that were said that I just want to follow up on a little bit, and I'm not sure if we have the staff that are here can answer these, but I want to try Carrie on one. Someone referred to this, the piece of city property in that would be the northeast corner on, is it on Lynn? Lynn and Latell? And I was out looking at a property next to that not that long ago and it was the first time I knew there was a piece of city property there. But the fact that it's owned by the city, does that make it available to the community? Or in, in fact, I mean, obviously the city dedicated it as a park or something, that certainly would imply that, but just because it's city property doesn't mean it's available, any different than, say, the public worksite would be available for kids to go and play in, right? I mean, it's, no one's kicking people out of there, but it's not, that's not the intent of the property. We got it on a, I don't know how we got that piece of property, but it's, it's not a programmed piece of property, correct?
That's correct. From my understanding, it was a tax forfeit property that the city acquired, probably due to the, it's real low. That's where a lot of the drainage runs to. The city owns a number of these properties that are unimproved through tax forfeitures. There might be a drainage area for a larger subdivision. But the policy of the city has been not to sell these parcels. We do get approached from time to time for people who are interested in buying them, buying these, these properties, but the city has, has made it a practice not to, not to sell these. To program that, that space for a park or anything else, that would be subject to recommendation by the city council and maybe the Parks Commission would take a look at that.
And I don't have an opinion about that one way or another. I just wanted to make sure that people weren't misunderstanding the purpose of the property or, or anything like that. And I'm not suggesting, you know, that there's some rule that people can't be using it, but we have to be careful not to alter, you know, it's impact on this issue, I think, is negligible. And then I'm curious, Carrie, if you know, was it just a weird coincidence that the City of St. Louis Park took an action, like, did I hear that a week ago? And do you know, I mean, what was the, why, why now?
Yeah, I, I don't think it's just a mere coincidence that this proposal has been made to the City of Edina and the residents petitioned the city to vacate their portion of the right-of-way in St. Louis Park, probably in fear of, of utilizing that right-of-way.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Platter? Other comments?
Mr.?
Mr. Staunton?
Carrie, the one question that came up at the end from Mr. Wild, and I know the chair addressed it, but I just, I think, I think what he was trying to say is, do we have anything that accounts for extra wear and tear as a result of an intense construction like this? I mean, we're, we're in a community that even though in Morningside, there's lots of redevelopment going on, it isn't, people next to it may feel like it's going on in every single lot simultaneously, but if you have a subdivision like this, this would be, we don't see this that often and, and there aren't exactly main streets that lead to this area. So I guess I took the question as, is there, is there some accounting for the fact that there might be additional wear and tear on the streets that lead to the construction area?
Yeah, that's a difficult one. It's something we're trying to get a hold of, get our arms around as part of the construction management plan, requiring builders to take pictures of the street so we know what condition the streets were in prior to construction and if there's any damage, they'd be responsible to repair that. That might be something that we take a look at as part of a construction management plan for this project. You know, we can dictate routes that construction traffic may have to take to the site. We can try to do an inventory of those streets, what condition that they may be in today prior to construction and, and maybe there is something we can do to require repairing of those streets.
Right, and because in contrast to kind of what we've been talking about with our subcommittee and ways that we can kind of manage the chaos that goes along with redevelopment is more of a city policy that applies, but it seems to me if, if there's kind of major simultaneous construction, there can be some city engagement with the developer to make sure that you're routing traffic appropriately. You know, one question that comes to me, comes to mind for me, as I've heard this, you know, the word that keeps recurring is character. And, and I hear the applicant talking about character and, you know, talking about the years and years, generations literally, that have been in the neighborhood, and I hear the neighbors talking about character, and I hear people who are new to the neighborhood talking about character, and people who've been there for a long time talking about character. And, you know, one of the things that hasn't been talked about, I know Mr. Knably spoke about the, the subdivision kind of positively in the, in the fact that the average area of the lots that you're creating is, is significantly larger than the average area of the lots that are, are in the neighborhood. I think 14,000 square feet to 9,500 square feet. That the average width of the lots that you're creating is 87 feet as opposed to the average width in the neighborhood of 50 feet. And without knowing kind of what's going to get built on these properties, I guess I'm wondering if anybody's asking the question about whether 75 or 85-foot lot width and 14,000 square foot lots is the right way to go. And before you answer, I recognize that's what our damn code says, is it's a 75-foot minimum. And people who can't get to sleep at night and watch replays of our meetings will know that we've spent a considerable amount of time talking about this business of 75 versus 50-foot lots, but I, I'm not quite sure what to do with it, but I raised the question that why, why would, you know, how is it going to fit the character if we put seven new, seven or eight new 75-foot wide lots? Wouldn't it be better to put more 50-foot lots? And, I mean, so long as we're already in the variance water. I throw that out to my colleagues. I don't know if people have thoughts on that.
Commissioner Platter?
Let's, you know, the character issues, in fairness, I live on Branson Street, which is right around here. And my whole street is 50-foot lots. And to me, that's the character of the neighborhood, right or wrong. I know there's different sized areas and I know as you get down in Lynn, there's 100-foot lots, there's other things like that. One thing I've always looked at this is it does seem very suburban and it's set up, as Edina set up their suburban areas, and how Edina was developed on the west side of town or the west, west side. And Morningside was never developed that way. Morningside was developed, a very eclectic area, different sized lots. And to me, this kind of screams as a place to have potentially different sized lots, potentially different sized configurations to somehow both fit the character of the neighborhood and allow, I would almost argue that the most land be preserved. In other words, if, if we, you still had seven lots here, but there were, I'm just throwing this out, 50-foot lots, you do have more trees preserved, you do have more impervious area or less impervious area in that respect than you would this other way. I actually like that the, I'm kind of in favor that the road doesn't go through. A lot of it is because of sustainability and all that new pavement that we would put there. But to take a step back even from that, is there a way to get, you know, kind of two happy meetings there? You get the same number of lots, but use a lot less land area to do it. So I, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Staunton in a way. Is there, is when we're in variance land, is there a way to do that? And to me, if you have 50 or 60-foot lots, you could almost have the character, like across Morningside, on the, on the south side of Morningside where you did have them lotted up, you did have that essential character there, and maybe there was a road going back for some more lots behind it or some kind of configuration like that. I'm just, I'm, I'm agreeing, I'm not sure what the exact configuration is, but it doesn't seem like this fits in the neighborhood with what else is going on with different sized lots and different sized homes. I'll leave it at that.
Well, I'm going to address the lot size issue. The minimum lot size in the City of Edina is 75 feet. And we've not granted variances except a while ago to create 50-foot lots. And two meetings ago, we had a proposal, which I thought was the ideal proposal for 50-foot lots, over near the junior high. And Mr. Commissioner Fisher, for example, talked about the fact that the whole area was platted for 50-foot lots. That variance was denied by this commission on a five to four vote, and I understand that the city council, except for one vote, rejected the proposal at the last meeting. So it seems to me if you got, the ordinance says a 75-foot lot is the minimum, then, you know, I think we're just whistling Dixie when we talk about trying to grant a variance for a 50-foot lot.
I hate to disagree with you, Mr. Fisher. You know how much I hate to disagree.
I hate to have you disagree with me, too.
We have granted variances and, and when we have, and we had a whole bunch of them, that, that most recent, yeah, you're always voting for them.
I'm tired of voting for them because I lose all the time.
But it, the discussions that we have had in those contexts have really been about that neighborhood character in the immediate vicinity, and that's what's driven those. And so, again, I come back to character and, you know, what's the right thing for this area? I guess the exception, I don't know if we're going to talk about smaller lots, if they have to live with the same number of lots, I'm not sure that's fair, but, but I, I just, I mean, in this area, there are so many smaller lots. It's just like when we've had those discussions in the Pamela Park neighborhood and, you know, the, the one we had near the junior high was nearer to more larger lots. The ones that were over by Pamela Park were closer to more smaller lots. I know that's what drove my votes on those issues and I, I think we can, we can get there in this situation.
It's an eloquent argument, but I'm going to disagree with you. Commissioner Fisher?
Well, I just want to say overall here, I appreciate the effort of the family. Honestly, the easiest solution for you, the best cover for you on this whole deal would have been to just sell this piece of property and act innocent to whatever was going to happen, because this is going to happen. And it would have been so much easier for you to do that. I appreciate, you know, the courage and the effort in what you're trying to do here. You know, what's, I've, I've been on this commission now nine years and this is really one of the first times I can honestly say, I can look out and say, every person in this room, including the developer, wants the exact same thing. We all want the same thing. The problem is, we all have a different idea about how we're going to keep the character of Morningside. So we all want the same thing, but we all see a little different way of getting there. As I've been listening tonight, I think we have the save the trees and slope group, we have the connectivity group, and then we have the difference of opinion of the road location group. But we all see those as the key to the character of Morningside. So I've identified the problem, and the problem is us, in that, first of all, our zoning code requires us to do everything we don't want to do here. And, and part of that, you know, we talked about it on the commission just a few minutes ago, that the zoning code was really established after this neighborhood. So a lot of these rules, we're sort of looking to the new suburbia that none of us really want. Morningside is an incredible neighborhood because it's eclectic, because there's nothing, I don't think there's four lots in a row anywhere in this neighborhood that you could say are exactly the same, and that's what makes it so special. The, the streets are all a little different, the houses are all a little different. We don't want to have seven or eight houses come in that look similar or, you know, massive. And yet, that's kind of where our rules are driving us. Now, so the city has some culpability in that, you know, we just have zoning codes like a lot of other suburbs. But we all have some culpability in, in the fact that a few years ago, as a commission, we worked really hard. It was my goal as the chair of this commission back in the day to, to create PUD, planned unit development. And it was really important, I felt it was essential for this community to have that tool to define development. But there was a really strong push and, and a lot of it came from this quadrant of the city to keep it the heck out of residential. Do not do PUD in residential because that's a threat. And, you know, you can never kind of foresee why that would be a bad idea, and now I kind of regret that we approved PUD but didn't allow it to happen in R1 neighborhoods, because this is exactly the tool we all need today to work together to design the best solution for this piece of property. But we don't have that tool. So to me, the solution is to ask for more variances, not less variances. We have to figure out a creative way to get what we all want. I, I believe that roadway, you know, I, I sort of fall on the side of, is there a way to connect for pedestrians without doing it with the cars? And I, I can't believe I'd ever say these words, that I would prefer a cul-de-sac, but, because that's not the way I would think. But in this case, the slope and the trees are really critical elements of this neighborhood as much as the connectivity. So if there's a way to get pedestrian connectivity and not so much the cars, maybe that's a way to do this. Definitely a narrower roadway, absolutely, I think that's something we should do, and maybe that's the way to get the neighbors a little bit more buffer. And, you know, if we were doing a PUD, I would be promoting smaller building pads. I'd, I'd prefer more lots with smaller. smaller building pads. I'd, I'd prefer more lots with smaller houses, or a way to control that house size. You could do that with the PUD, you'd say, you know, because at the end of the day, the families should come out whole. This property is going to be developed, it has a right to be, they have absolutely every right to develop, you know, those eight lots. But if it's in the best interest of the neighborhood to have ten lots, but smaller and placed elsewhere, the end result, the value of the property stays the same, and the neighborhood comes out ahead. I don't know how we get there exactly, but if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, it didn't sound like you're on a super fast-track timeline. I don't know if there's a way, and I think, I'd like to figure out a way that we could at least have the discussion about, are, are there more variances required to get what we're all looking for here?
Would you, you keep looking like, would you like to say something about that?
I, I didn't know I was allowed to comment in this section, so, yeah.
That's a question. It was a question. What do you think about that?
What do I think about that? Well, you're absolutely right that the design that we've come up with is the, our, our best effort to meet the codes and the requirements of the City of Edina. I remind you that the through-street design is a conforming concept that, I'm told, we don't have to get variances on and thereby can go through with that if we want to. We agree as a family that that, that we think that doesn't really maintain the, the neighborhood the way that we want to see it maintained. We're not opposed to, to other concepts. I'm a little bit, I've never been through any of these meetings before, I'm a little bit surprised that you're recommending more variances. Yeah, I'm actually kind of gobsmacked by it. So I don't, I don't know how to answer that, really, other than to say that, yes, you're right, we're not on a fast track, unless, and this is a big caveat, I'm reminding you that my mother is eighty-nine years old, and if something happens to her, we are on a fast track. So right now, as long as she stays healthy and happy and continues to live in that home, I don't want to evict her. So, so we're, we're, we're willing to, to, to work with the council and the neighborhood at large. But I don't hear the direction yet, to be quite honest with you. So I guess that's where the family stands on that.
Excuse me, if I, can I weigh in? I just want more thing?
Sure.
The issue of connectivity. I just want to remind the council that, that there's a sidewalk two-hundred feet over on Lynn Avenue to the east that does all that connectivity stuff already.
Mr. Forrest? Commissioner Potts?
Okay, thanks. I think, yeah, this is getting to what I think Mr. Dean asked, are there, are there more than these two options? And I think there, Commissioner Fisher is correctly pointing out that there, that there are, if we're willing to go beyond seeking a minimum number of variances and a seventy-five-foot wide lot. And we've, I think we've got one or two ways to pursue that, working with staff. We've got a sketch plan tool. We can have an informal meeting. Carrie, can you elaborate on that?
Certainly, to take a step back and talk about the sixty-day rule, we've got an application that's been submitted, and by state law, we have to take final action by March 5th. So we do have a little bit of time. The sketch plan that you're referring to is come back to the group, I think this is what I'm hearing. Maybe we ask the applicant to come back with a sketch drop of a narrow street, maybe adding a lot or two, maybe even a couple of alternatives, and come back and just discuss, discuss that without doing any engineering or putting a lot of detail into that plan, and discuss alternatives.
I mean, I, I think we need to recognize, as you started out, how unique this site is. And I think you've, you've certainly come up with a, a decent alternative to a through-street while respecting every, you know, city code possible and only asking for three variances. I think there are probably other ways to, to come up with options. It'll be a better solution for everybody involved if we take this alternative process that we're trying to figure out here.
Mr. Forrest?
I agree. I think that, that this location, unique is kind of an understatement. I mean, there's unique challenges because of the topography, but also, you know, some opportunities as well, and some, some positives in the fact that by respecting the topography, we're able to preserve some of the, the trees and the drainage and things like that. It's also unique in that it is in a fully-developed neighborhood, and you're talking about a number of lots at one time. So we do have to really, I think, honestly recognize that that impact could be incredibly large on the people to have either a lot of construction going on at one time, or a prolonged period of construction. Some people only live in a house for four years, but that's where their memories are made. So, you know, to, I don't want to dismiss it and say, oh, well, you know, maybe it'll only be one or two houses at a time. But, you know, if this is going on for a long time, that, that can negatively impact. And so, that's another thing that's really different, is we're not looking at an undeveloped area where we're trying to, you know, put a subdivision in. This is, let's tuck this in and make it fit. And I pulled the guidelines out of our ordinances for, guidelines and criteria for evaluating plats and subdivisions, and there's a list of eighteen considerations we're supposed to do. The first one is the impact of the proposed plat or subdivision and development on the character and symmetry of the neighborhood, as evidenced and indicated blah, 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 by the suitability of the size and shape of the lots, and the compatibility of the size, shape, location, and arrangement of the lots with the proposed density and intended use, and the density of the use of lots in the neighborhood. So in other words, yeah, we're looking at the right things here. This is something we should be considering. That should be consistent with the comp plan. We've talked about the safety issues, and I think that's been nicely addressed. And street grades, physical characteristics, including the, that was my question earlier about the portion of the property that had a slope of exceeding eighteen percent, because one thing is, we're supposed to look at is whether the development grades more than twenty-five percent of that eighteen percent property. But, so I, it, it's a challenge. I mean, I think they've done some things really well. I did have a couple of questions, and maybe this is a little late to ask them. One was, who's going to maintain the outlot? And that, if, there was a question, one of the letters that we got about the, you know, this development has a name, is there going to be a monument to that? I would oppose having any kind of signage or monument saying, this is the development. And, there's one more thing. Oh, the fact that we are specifically allowed in our code to apply conditions to variances and the situation at hand. So, I mean, it specifically calls out that that's a possibility. So we can keep that in mind, whether it has to do with whether or not there's a sidewalk, or, or management of the construction traffic. But, you know, these are people who've invested their lives in this neighborhood, and we need to respect that as best we can. But it's, I'm glad that everybody's bringing up a lot of different ideas and suggestions, and not just going yea and nays.
Having listened more than spoken with respect to this proposal, one of the things I'm, I'm noodling and trying to understand, I get my arms and my head around a little bit, when we talk about sort of changing the dynamic of what we're doing, or what we were, I think, initially thinking we were doing this evening with respect to this proposal, it seems to me that we're moving in the direction of, of actually maybe considering legislating something different, actually modifying our existing ordinances in order to accommodate this. And am I hearing that correctly? Because I'm not sure what other flexibility we have that is mind-bending enough to accomplish some of the things that we're talking about.
I don't, I don't think we get there with variances. Commissioner Forrest?
I think if there's some, like they say, roughly proportional conditions put on the property to, to what the issues are, I think that if it, if it's related to a situation, like the topography of the land, I think that does rise to the level of a hardship, because it is unique to that property. So I think there is the potential of doing it, you know, when you're talking about lot shape and size, anyway, through the variance process, as long as there is a need for it.
I understand that. I, I understand that to some extent, but what, I'm trying to think about what the, the owner, what we're asking the owner to go back and do. I'm not sure that it's reasonable to expect them to try to concoct up a series of variance opportunities. I'm almost thinking what we're really looking for him to do is come back and almost act as if he's got a blank slate to work with and, and make a completely different proposal that we may then react to and say, we can, we can actually modify our ordinances on a site-specific basis like this to accommodate this. I, I don't know. This, I don't, this perhaps the first time we've ever explored something like this.
I, I think, too, that we, I, I agree with you. I don't like people to have to go through the extra time and expense to, you know, here, try this one, no, look at that one. But, now I lost my train of thought.
I'm actually open to it. I'm not, I'm not trying to say I'm restricted, I'm not trying to control it.
But I think, it's not a slam dunk that, that they'd be able to just put that through-street in necessarily either, because in plating a subdivision, we're supposed to consider topography. And if it's shown that that would show a lot of, you know, problems with drainage and excess of grading and things like that, then, you know, it's not a slam dunk that they could plat those lots on a through-street. I mean, we don't know. That information hasn't been provided to us. I am also a little bit concerned, too, about, when you talk about neighborhood character and you're developing these lots one at a time, and there's, you know, how are you going to control, you know, any consistency of design, or any, like somebody mentioned, the size of the houses and things like that? You know, it could end up being an interesting hodgepodge.
Mr. Schroder?
I think we're, we're trying to figure out a pattern of rules, when what we should really be trying to figure out is what the right solution is. And all we have right now in front of us is a roughly two-dimensional exercise in geometry, when what we're talking about is a three-dimensional experience of a neighborhood. And I think we ought to be starting out with the desired solution, and then crafting a set of rules that actually help us achieve that. And we're not there yet. I mean, I look at the, the patterns of lots and the kinds of houses in this neighborhood, and it's very, very idiosyncratic. And we're not going to find an ordinance anywhere that allows us to do it without going to some other structure. We don't have the structure yet. What we need to do, I think, is find the pattern that's right for this neighborhood, for this subdivision in this neighborhood, and then work backwards to find the way we actually achieve what we collectively as a community would want to have happen here, and what benefits those parties who ought to benefit from developing this property. We're not there yet. I think that, as, as was suggested, we ought to step back, we ought to find a way to work with the developer to bring alternatives forward to what we've seen so far tonight, whether it's an alternative to what I kind of define as the buy-right solution, which allows a road going down the hill and chopping up trees, chopping up grades, or some modified solution. I think there are other models that we ought to be looking at and working backwards to, to a, a method of approval that actually achieves what we want to have happened here.
Commissioner Plonider?
Let's say, I, I don't know how to work with the city, I mean, some kind of design charrette to, to work through that. I don't know, Carrie, is there precedent for that? You know, you could, other than the Grandview District, excuse me, for a smaller item like this? Do you have any thoughts?
We haven't done anything like that, at least during my time, or even prior to, not that I'm aware of, other than we've created the sketch plan opportunity.
Well, you know, on some commercial properties in the past, we've sometimes assigned a couple of planning commissioners to work with the applicant in between meetings to kind of try to, you know, come up with some ideas to then come back. I can remember a couple of situations like that where we did that. Maybe that's an approach. And I, the other thing I hear is the applicant saying, you know, reading between the lines, you were, you were working as hard as you could to meet the zoning requirements. And so, this is kind of a outside-the-box, no, I think gobsmacked is what you said. That what if you started with just, if we didn't have to, you know, comply with this code, how would we figure out the right answer, as Commissioner Schroder was saying? And then, you know, maybe we can't do all of that, but maybe we can get to some of that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, just a couple of quick comments. I understand what the Planning Commission is saying. We designed a number of infill projects, similar to what you're talking about, and, and we usually do it in other cities under a PUD-type situation, where they throw the rules out. We've got a certain density that we've got to work in, and we try to make it work for everybody. The issue, one issue here is the PUD doesn't apply based on the size of the property. I think you can still do a PUD in the residential zoning, but it's got to be over maybe ten acres, and we're at a three acre.
Can't do it anywhere in an R1.
Oh, maybe, so, okay. But again, we've done that, but a couple of things. One thing I'm hearing, you know, I understand what the Planning Commission's saying. I think I can kind of visualize what you're looking for, the smaller lots and smaller buildings that would be accompanied by that, maybe some design guidelines on what these buildings look like. And again, we've done that before. You get certain models of what the houses look like, certain character for what this little cul-de-sac might appear to be, you know, dormers, or, you know, whatever the architectural symbols for the homes are going to be. But what I've heard from the Planning Commission, what I've heard from the neighbors, I think are maybe a little bit two different things. I heard people come up here and talk about, they want less density, not more density. I heard that from one person, and we've heard in neighborhood meetings from others. I've heard a number of people say they want less traffic, not more traffic. And that's going to be exacerbated by adding one more home or two more homes. And we've heard, well, we just heard somebody talk about construction impacts to Morningside, and I can't imagine that adding additional homes is going to make it any better. So I think there's a number of neighborhood issues that would have to kind of mesh with what, you know, you people are looking for, too. I understand that, but I don't think we want to get too far down the road and then bring that back to the neighbor and then end up where we are today, so.
We wouldn't have to add more lots. And we could make them smaller. I just was assuming that you want to kind of be whole at the end, so.
You what?
Yeah.
So, right now, we have a proposal in front of us, and we either have a motion to make on what's in front of us, or we ask the developer for time to reconsider this. And we're not going to solve the problem sitting around the desk tonight. I think we should either move to approve or deny the subdivision, or ask the developer if they're willing to step back for a little bit of time and work with us to find some other solutions. We could talk all night about what the right solution might be. We're not going to get any closer. We either act, or we do something else.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, we would be in favor of tabling the project for, you know, maybe a month, and doing some sketches, some ideas on what we've done in the past, what we think you, people, what we've heard, what you're looking for. And we could work with the planner and come up with some ideas, maybe work with a couple of planning commissions, send out some, you know, emails and PDFs and some of the ideas we come up with. And then be able to come back to a Planning Commission meeting and address those, but maybe concurrently, hey, if that doesn't, I'd also want to have the neighborhood input in that during that same kind of time period.
Sure.
You know, we certainly don't want to tell them one thing and then go in a completely different direction. But we're, you know, again, we don't have a, which is unusual, we don't have a real tight timeline, given that it's the family working on the development of the project. So they told me that, you know, to wait a month and come back to the Planning Commission in January would be acceptable, and then we would expect maybe to go to the next meeting again to the city council in February, so.
Carrie, do we need, do we ask them to extend that March 5th deadline to do this, or?
If we need to go beyond the March, March 5th deadline, they would need to extend. I just, I, I think this is a great direction. I just want to add that any sketches or I just want to add that any sketches or anything that we review in sketch plan form, we should also bring to the city council for their review before it comes back in a formal application.
Okay. Do we need a formal action to do this?
Just, you could just table it.
Motion to table.
Motion to continue.
Yeah, and if it's not date-specific, yeah, you don't have to make it date-specific, and so then the next time that you hold a public hearing, the city would just have to renotice when that public hearing might be.
So, we can't, we can't just continue the public, I guess we've closed the public hearing, haven't we?
You can always reopen a public hearing. In fact, if it's a, you know, we come back in a sketch plan, that's not a, it's not a public hearing, but the next time, if they change their application, we would. It's almost like starting all over again.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, when, when are our two January meetings?
January 9th and January 23rd.
So, what if we, if we continue this to the January 23 meeting? I'd make that motion. Is that the wrong, before I make that motion, you have something to say about that? The 9th? I just thought with the holidays and things, maybe, 23rd works, okay? So, I'd move that we continue this to the 23rd and ask the applicant, consistent with the conversation here, to generate some additional concepts.
Motion made and seconded to continue this discussion until the 23rd of January with some additional discussion amongst the community and the developers or the applicants and possible alternative suggestions. Any further discussion? Commissioner Plater.
Would you be signing tonight, members of the planning commission to work with that, or would that have come at a later date? Or are there volunteers now to help with that discussion?
You know, that was kind of a direction I was thinking about, but the more I heard the applicant talk, I think they've, it sounds like Mr. Knebel's got some experience with trying to do infill development and PUD settings. He's heard a lot. Sounds like they've had a lot of conversations with the neighbors, heard what's going on tonight. I'm not sure that we need to, I mean, I'm open, but.
Mr. Schroder.
I'd actually like to be able to find a way to provide more direct input to their planning process. This is something that affects the entire community. I think as a planning commission, we should take a rather bold step and actually be more involved in the process than just reacting to it. And I think if there were volunteers, and I'd be willing to be one of them, to meet briefly with the developer, to review some options, I think we should be doing that. I think I would like to be able to see this move forward more quickly if we find a solution, as opposed to cycling back through, because we haven't had a chance to provide some direct input.
Okay, Mr. Schroder's volunteered to work with the applicant. Is there any other members of the commission that would like to participate?
Any other architects?
I'll volunteer, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Potts, anybody else? One more would be fine, it's not necessary.
I can certainly be involved.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher.
So, I'd be willing to amend my motion to, to call for Commissioners Potts, Schroder, and Fisher to, to meet with the applicant in the interim, to work with them, and then bring back a, the sketch ideas and concepts that we discussed.
Is that okay with the seconder? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, that's what we will do. I want to thank everybody that participated in tonight's discussion. It was lengthy, I appreciate the fact that you stuck with us. We had some good discussion. Thank very much the family for their concern for the community and for bringing this proposal forward and for agreeing to work with, with everyone to advance this matter. I'll let the room clear here. Okay, the, the next item on the agenda, correspondence and petitions, you received council connection, you received your attendance report. I note our two stellar, our two stars are still there. It's going to come right down to the wire, we'll see what happens. Miscellaneous, I don't even know if there's, is there any miscellaneous? Chair and commission member comments? I have no comments. I guess I do have a comment. I want to thank Commissioner Plater and Potts and Forrest for the work that they're doing, and thank Commissioner Schroder and Commissioner Potts and Commissioner Fisher for volunteering to work with this issue. Any other commission member comments? Staff comments? We don't have a meeting, yeah, what's our next schedule?
That's right. We, the December 26 meeting has been canceled, so you can all take the night off. Our next meeting will be January 9th.
Very good. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.